Good evening. I'm John Wensky, chairperson of the Shrewsbury School Committee, and welcome to our meeting for Wednesday, March 30th, 2022. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast live on Selco channels 29 and 329 and streamed live on Shrewsbury Media Connections website. Thank you to SMC Executive Director Mark Sarah and Liz Poploski for their assistance with this broadcast. Tonight's meeting will be rebroadcast between now and our next scheduled meeting on Wednesday, April 13th. First item on the agenda is public participation. Tonight, we do not have anybody that's requested to speak. However, for future meetings, if anyone wishes to speak at public participation, they should contact the chair prior to the meeting. The school committee encourages citizens of the district to watch our meetings so they can become better acquainted with the operations and programs of the Shrewsbury Public Schools. The next item on the agenda is Chairperson's and Members' Report. Members, anything to comment this week? Ms. Heffernan?
Thank you very much, Mr. Wensky. I want to just acknowledge, I'm sure we'll hear more about it and given some of the items that we have on the agenda for tonight, but I had the joy of attending our Unified Basketball Team's middle school game last week. I know some people in the audience were there as well. To say it was heartwarming is an understatement, and the media event that was shared did a great job, but being one of the, I, hundreds of people in the crowd, hundreds of people in the crowd to cheer on our youngsters, it was just incredible and certainly brought tears to the eyes, but I can say all of my kids wanted to go. They all wanted to know when there were going to be more games, and I recognize that we are really leading the state, and there are no more teams to play. There are so few that have kind of really were paving the way there. So it was just an incredible experience, and I want to just call out particularly the staff. I know there are many, many individuals that make that happen, some of whom I know are here this evening from our Special Education Department, but also the staff at Oak and Sherwood, the coaches. I know Mr. Ponacelli was featured in one of our media reports as well, but I know there's a whole host of people behind that that really pull it together. But I also wanted to say, I was so proud of our students, all of them, and it was just an incredible experience, and as we see that program continue to grow at all the different levels of our school, I think it's something that, as a community, we should be incredibly proud of, and I certainly felt that in particular being there. So, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Okay. The next item on our agenda is Superintendent's Report. Dr. Sawyer?
Thank you very much. I was also going to mention the Unified Basketball game, and we are going to refer to it in our upcoming reports, so we'll look forward to that, but it was a really extraordinary event, and we're really pleased and proud that we're able to provide that for our students at the middle level. Also wanted to congratulate and commend the robotics team. The Shrewsbury Robotics Team hosted a New England competition at Shrewsbury High School. Because they hosted, it was a very large event, they did not compete, but they were there doing everything from helping with setup. There were several alumni who were back assisting with the program as well and selling concessions, all the different things you do when you host a big event. It was U.S. First Robotics, just an outstanding organization, and it was really privileged to be able to see what a great job our high school team did in being great hosts, so appreciate that. Also wanted to mention to everyone that we have two positions that are beginning here in the district that we had advertised for several weeks back. Chris Matero, who had done excellent work for us in a variety of ways as one of our two human resources assistants, took a job in the newly expanded Human Resources Department in the municipal part of our town government, which opened up a position, and then at that op, we took that opportunity to do some reorganization. We had also been, have been hiring or having some other individuals work a variety of hours just to keep up with the demands of various state reports that we're required to do and just the human resources requirements of a district that has over a thousand staff when you count substitutes and everyone else with whom we work. And as part of that reorganization, we took Ms. Matero's position, and it's now called an HR manager position, and I'm pleased to let people know that Lindsay Stasiowski has been hired to fill that position. She'll begin her work on April 11th. Ms. Stasiowski holds a master's degree in human resource management from the New England College of Business. She has two nationally recognized HR certifications, a professional in human resources and a Society of Human Resources Management certified professional credential. She's most recently been the Director of HR and Operations for the Papian Law and Seasonal Connect in Framingham, Massachusetts, and prior to that, she served as the Human Resources Officer for Athol Savings Bank. And then at the same time, because the state reporting piece has been so intensive, especially around staffing reporting, we did add the position of data specialist. This position is something, both of these really were promoted by the report done a few years ago by the UMass Boston Collins Center in terms of what capacity we needed to function effectively as a district administration. And I'm very pleased to let people know that Jeffrey Thayer, who previously was working for us as an IT specialist at Shrewsbury High School, has been hired to work as our data specialist. Mr. Thayer holds a Master's in Business Administration from Assumption University. He has worked not only with us as an IT specialist, but also has been a financial analyst for Staples. He's served in the U.S. Coast Guard Auxiliary, and he's been a software quality assurance analyst, as well as a tech support specialist for the MLS Property Information Network in Shrewsbury. And Mr. Thayer is an outstanding employee. We're pleased that he's in this new role. So this will give us, certainly this reorganization will give us better capacity in terms of what we're able to meet our demands, meet the demands that are expected of us by state reporting and by all the various human resources and technology needs. So, very positive development for the school district, and we want to welcome Ms. Stasiowski and Mr. Thayer into these new roles. And that is Superintendent's Report this evening.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, any questions or comments? Okay. Move on to the next item on our agenda, which is a report on district response to the pandemic, and back to Dr. Sawyer. Report.
Thank you very much. Our primary goal all year has been to maintain our in-person, full-time learning with minimal disruptions while minimizing the chances of contracting COVID-19 at school. We've used a three-pronged approach, strategies that reduce the risk of transmission, creating a sense of belonging and supporting students' social, emotional, and mental health needs, as well as providing learning opportunities that support students' academic needs. Right now, Massachusetts remains at a low positivity rate on a seven-day average, just at 2%. You can see how that's evolved over time from the Omicron surge to more recent reports. So, ticked up a little bit since the last time we reported, but still at a very low level below that 5% threshold. In terms of cases by age, you can see these continue to come down from almost over 1,000 to about 896 for ages zero to nine in Massachusetts, and it's come down from over 1,800 to just over 1,200 cases among those ages 10 to 19. In terms of hospital admissions, this is something that continues to drop. You can see that in the statistics there for zero to 11 years, 12 to 17, and where we were, it's a little bit higher for 18 and 19-year-olds than the last time, but very, very low rates of hospital admission for young people. And overall, that's been a, continues to be a success story, although we know that the number of cases have ticked up a little bit in the state in terms of the impact seems to still be muted, and of course, there's more treatments available now. Locally, you can see the total cases in the town of Shrewsbury versus the number of student cases that we have had, and you can see that actually, and of course, some of this is not going to track because the town of Shrewsbury cases are really those that are officially coming through the public health system. Some of our cases are those that we're made aware of that are done through rapid testing and have never gone through the public health system. So you can see that, just to get a sense of what that ratio is in perspective, you can see at the bottom of the page that we're at 0.25%, I'm sorry, 0.35% average student positivity rate of all of our students in the district. Three tenths plus of 1% have tested positive in March. This is the 14-day positive test rate in Shrewsbury, which is 2.64%. And then our current case count, so far this week, we've had 26 cases as of 3 o'clock today. 22 of them were in school during their infectious period, brings our total number of cases since the start of the school year to 1,950. As far as the vaccinated versus unvaccinated cases, you can see those statistics on this Just a reminder, we publish a dashboard every Monday that indicates how many from the previous week. That number 44 had been essentially just about twice what we had the previous week, we're paying close attention to that, but of course, we're looking at overall school attendance, which I'll speak to in a moment, and whether or not we're seeing any specific significant clusters or spread in the schools, which we've had a couple of instances where we believe the transmissions happened in school, but for the most part, they seem to just be spread across various places across district and schools. This is the visual of our cases by day, which again, have ticked up a little bit since I last reported, but are still in a very reasonable place. In terms of cases by week, again, that's the number I just spoke to. This just gives you a visual of our school-by-school number of cases total for the year so far. And this slide shows by grade level what the distribution is. Student total cases versus staff cases. This is vaccination data by age group in Shrewsbury. This is reported by the state, where we still see about 72% with at least one dose among our five to 11-year-olds in town and 63% being fully vaccinated. Much higher numbers for one-shot and full vaccination for our teens. And you can see as far as booster doses, about a third of our 12 to 15-year-olds and a little more than half of our 16 to 19-year-olds have received a booster dose of the vaccine. This is just a comparison to local communities. It continues to hold essentially the same relative place compared to our neighboring communities as it has over the last several reports. In terms of our testing protocol and program, again, we're using our centralized testing site on Maple Avenue at the municipal fields, no, sorry, not municipal, I keep calling that, the Maple Ave Fields, where there's a temporary trailer where testing happens through our state program. There have been 235 tests administered to date with 51 positive results, but more recently in March, there have been 57 tests with only two positive results. So again, we've seen that percentage move down significantly. In terms of our pooled testing, about 15% of our students and staff are participating at this point. You can see overall, for the year, we have a 1% positivity rate, and right now, since March 1st, we're at a four tenths of 1% positivity rate. The at-home rapid testing program that we've been having as well, we've got about 650 staff, 1,950 students participating, and we've only received two positive results from that testing since we began, one of those since March 1st. In terms of our absentee rate, for the month of March, we've been averaging about 4.6%. And that's dropped down significantly from when the Omicron surge happened, and it's been pretty consistent where we were since we came back from February break. And we, anecdotally, we certainly are seeing some other colds and illnesses that are typical routine that we'd see during a typical school year. That's just a bar chart that shows the absence percentages on a day-by-day basis. As far as staff absences, the rate right now is a little over 5%. Again, dropped substantially since the Omicron surge, and the number of those absences due to COVID is de minimis compared to what we were experiencing right after the December break in January. And you can see that illustrated here. The red bar is due to COVID, and the blue is just the overall tracking on a day-by-day basis over the month of March. So again, our goal has been to maintain school. We're very pleased to be here in school learning. One thing I would say to the committee as I wrap this report up for this update is that obviously we've been now a few weeks with masking being optional. We're not seeing any significant major increase in cases. A couple of instances where we're, had what we believe are some staff-to-staff transmission, staff who work closely together, a couple of situations where teachers work specifically closely with certain students where we've seen a transmission. But overall, again, most of the cases we trace to, or connect to outside cases from the school district. Many, we don't know where they're coming from, but overall, compared to the student population and staff population, it is still, we're still in a much better place than we were in the early winter. I believe that, you know, we have a variety of things that we've been doing over the course of the year as mitigation strategies. Some of those at this point seem to be beyond their usefulness, such as seating in cafeterias to be very strict about where kids have to sit every day, because essentially, we're not required anymore and haven't been doing the contact tracing that that facilitated. There's a variety of things that were in the, things we put into place at the start of the school year that indicated in that document that you approved back in August that, you know, as necessary. And so at this point, barring any objection from the school committee, our plan as an administrative team is to start thoughtfully making changes that, again, will continue to normalize our operations more and more. We wanted to be cautious after we had, went to mask optional to make sure we weren't seeing significant spikes in numbers of cases. We'll continue to keep an eye on the numbers, of course. We can always move back in the other direction if we need to, but, you know, we believe that, especially with the warmer weather coming, and of course, better treatments available that are for people who may be immunocompromised or may have difficulty for whatever reason if they do contract COVID. We're just in a much stronger place as a, as a community generally and because of all the different advancements that have been made with medication and approaches. So with that, I will wrap this up, and if there's any questions or comments from the committee, be pleased to hear them.
Great. Thank you so much, colleagues. Any questions or comments? Mr. Bouch?
Just a question about the at-home testing program. I'm curious about participation levels in that. Do we only receive feedback from the family when there's a positive test?
Correct.
Okay. So we would not necessarily know if there was a family that had been taking the test and maybe opted to kind of stop doing it?
That is correct.
Okay.
Or if someone forgot, or if someone, yeah. So it's, you know, they pick up their tests, some may forget to pick them up one week, but it's not, it's really more of a reassurance for the family and an ability for them to, they're expected and had to sign off to participate, that they would let us know. You know, our families have been really excellent about informing our school nurses if their child has tested positive, and it's just one more way to survey, but we don't really have any way of knowing if the, you know, how consistently people are using those tests. We ask them to test every Wednesday evening, so if people are watching, it's a good reminder. But, you know, that's something that again, even in a general sense, because we're also doing the pool testing, and we have a pretty, although it's, it's gone down about 15% that people are participating, that's still a pretty significant sample size. If we were seeing really significant increases with that, you know, we might look to formalize things a little bit more, but it's a good option for families to have, but we really don't have a way of tracking that.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments? All right. Great. Thank you so much for the report.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is a report regarding the mindfulness program. During this report, we'll receive an update on the partnership between Shrewsbury Public Schools and Whole School Mindfulness, formerly the Mindfulness Director Initiative or MDI. Students from 4th and 8th grade who have been engaged with mindfulness work this year will share information about their experiences. We do have many special guests today, so to kick things off, I'll hand it back to Dr. Sawyer.
Thank you very much. And while everyone's getting set up and seated at the table before Dr. Lozot introduces folks who are with us, just wanted to let those who are watching know that the school committee received a memo from Dr. Lozot that had a variety of information about the initiative we've been interacting over the past few years with, what is now known as Whole School Mindfulness, previously known as the Mindfulness Director Initiative. That is a group that we've partnered with to try to bring opportunities for students to learn about and practice mindfulness, as well as staff, as well as families. This has been a program that was started prior to the pandemic, was interrupted by the pandemic in a variety of ways, but this year, very pleased we've been able to have some consistency in a variety of ways in which the mindfulness director with whom we contract through Homeschool, through Whole School Mindfulness has been able to bring, you're going to hear about that this evening. One of the things that continues to resonate with me is that, and I know there were links provided in the document relative to the research base around mindfulness and mindfulness in schools and what has been a growing and more and more robust set of research indicating the benefits that it can bring. It's become, I think, since this came on board a few years ago, it's become, I think mindfulness has continued to become much more in the mainstream, what people are familiar with. I think it's hard to read anything about programs to reduce stress or anxiety that don't mention mindfulness and breathing and these kinds of things as an important strategy or tool. And what you'll hear about this evening from the report are ways in which some of these things are happening in our schools. I know in the report or the memo that Dr. Lozot gave to you, it talked about links to, you know, the state government has a page about mindfulness and resources. Businesses are using this as a stress reduction strategy, and of course, UMass Medical has a longstanding history. There really is a lot of the original innovation around mindfulness and John Cabot-Zinn's work in that, that for a while was located right down the street here on Maple Avenue, was centered, UMass's program. So it's something that we appreciate, and I appreciate that we've been working on in a variety of ways, and we're looking forward to hearing directly from the students this evening, as well as folks who are associated, including our mindfulness director, Jordan Grinstein. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Lozot and take it away.
Thank you very much for having us this evening, and I want to thank the parents and teachers and administrators who are also here with us. I'm going to begin by asking, our students are going to start the presentation, and then we're going to let them enjoy the rest of it from their homes. So I'm going to start by asking Eden, if you, can you unclip that microphone? And we're going to pass, here, we're going to pass this along. They'll just let you know, I can help, who they are and what grades they're in and what schools they go to for starters. So you can hold it. I don't know how to press it along this way. Just.
I am, I am Eden from Patton School, and I'm in 4th grade.
I'm Ginny from Patton School, and I'm also in 4th grade.
I'm Anna from, I'm Anna from New Deal School, who's in 4th grade.
I'm Aditya Mishra from New Deal School, and I'm also in 4th grade.
I'm Isaiah, and I'm, I'm from Oak Middle School.
I'm Ahmad, and I'm from Oak Middle School, in 8th grade.
And I'm Dr. Lozot. I'm the principal at Patton School and the Assistant Superintendent for Community Partnerships and Wellbeing.
My name is Jordan Grinstein. I'm the Shrewsbury Public Schools Mindfulness Director. Hello.
I'm Shelley Roy, the Assistant Principal of the New Deal School.
Hi, I'm Mark Waxman. I'm the Senior Partner at Whole School Mindfulness.
I'm just going to get a cough drop. We'll be right there. And I want to, I also want to thank Mrs. Kirchi for being here from Oak Middle School and.
Yes, and I'd like to introduce, we have one of our new 4th grade teachers from the New Deal School, Adriana Soro is here, supporting her 4th grade.
We just learned that microphone wasn't on. Eden has a bit of a cough, but Eden and Ginny would like to take us through a guided practice, and then they're going to share a bit about their mindfulness experiences, and then the other students will follow.
I'm Ginny.
And I'm Eden.
And today, we're gonna teach you liquid light.
For this breath, you can choose to sit or stand, and choose to close your eyes or to keep them open. Imagine you, imagine you have, imagine you have, imagine you have liquid forming in your feet, and it's bright.
It can be any color you want. It can change colors or be sparkly.
Now, now let the, now let the liquid light rise to your knees. Take a deep breath. In and out.
Now let this calm liquid light rise to your waist. Take another deep breath.
Now let it, now let it rise to your, now let it rise to your chest, and as, and as it rises, feel how it makes you feel safe and peaceful and calm.
Now let this light spill down your shoulders and fill up your head. Does it have a scent? Or a taste?
Does, does it have a sound, like a waterfall?
Now, as you notice this liquid light, let it spill out of your body, filling the room around you with everyone it touches with kindness and peacefulness.
Now, now let it, now let your liquid light go throughout the whole building.
Again, filling everyone it touches with kindness and passion.
Now, now let, now let it go also throughout Shrewsbury. Take one deep breath.
Now let this liquid light fill the whole country. Take a deep breath.
Now let it fill the whole world, and everyone inside of it is happy and peaceful and calm and kind, and it's all because of you.
Slowly bring this liquid light back in, but don't take it all back in. Leave a little bit of it so the world can still feel that sense of happiness and safeness. Start to pull it back to the United States. Take a deep breath.
Now start to pull it back into Shrewsbury.
But remember, leave a little trace of it wherever it's been.
Now bring it back inside of this room. And now into your body.
Don't let it go back to your feet. Let it stay here, so whenever you need it, you can use it, and if anyone else around you needs it, you can share it with them again, too.
So at this time, we're just going to go down the line here and share a little bit about reasons which mindfulness has impacted us and supported us this year. Now you can go to your, and I believe it's on, Dr. McGee. Or can you?
Sorry, read the script. Hi, my name is Aditya.
Oh, sorry. Starting with Eden, in my, go ahead, Eden, you can start.
Hello, my name is Eden Maney. I'm a student in Miss Moon 4th Grade class. I want to share how mindfulness has affected my life. One day, our classroom teacher, Mr. Jordan, taught us about mindfulness. He gathered us on the rug and taught us a good lesson. One day, Mr. Jordan led us to teach him classes. We, we keep on learning. He immediately helped with my public speaking and helped my stress. It helped, it helped in public speaking because when you're talking to people in front of the class, you'll get used to it and more comfortable. You can use the breath any.
You can use the breath anytime. Mr. Jordan taught me how you can do that anytime of the day. It helped me a lot. Sometimes when the new teacher encourages other students to do my breaths, too. Once, we, once we went to teach a class, some students decided to do it, too. And they did a awesome job. We practice, and first to help others do the same. That is how mindfulness affected my life.
Well, my name is Ginny Corney. At the time, Mr. Jordan comes into our classroom, he leaves everyone smiling and more calm. Like Eden said, it helps us with our public speaking because Mr. Jordan takes us to younger classes to share our mindfulness activities. Teaching the younger classes made everyone more comfortable and confident. Sometimes Mr. Jordan invites us to go to another class and teach mindfulness. Mindfulness also helps me when I go to bed at night. The breathing relaxes me for the night. Mr. Jordan also helps us de-stress before a test. He taught us a test breath to help us clear our minds. This helps during test times, and I'm sure it will help during MCAS. Everybody loves to go with Mr. Jordan to other classes. We have all learned something from him. Even my teacher participates when we have a group mindfulness. That is how mindfulness affected my life.
Hi, my name is Aditya Mishra, and I am a fourth grade student in Miss Soro's class at Beal School. I've enjoyed being a mindfulness champion this year, and have learned many great strategies from Mr. Jordan. If I'm a little stressed or overwhelmed about school, I just take a few deep breaths, and that's, that helps me not to feel worried. Why don't you try practicing one of my favorite ones with me, the rainbow breath? So you can sit or stand, open your eyes or close for this one, and just be mindful of your space. So when we breathe in, we can try and reach for the sky, and when we breathe out, we can lower our arms. Breathe in, breathe out, breathe in, breathe out, breathe in, last one, breathe out. Notice how you feel.
Thank you, thank you, Aditya. My name is Anna Bowden, and I'm also a fourth grade student in Miss Soro's class at the New Beal School. When I first started as a mindfulness leader, I would stutter, and I got really nervous with everyone staring at me. Kids could hear it in my voice. Mr. Jordan told me that I would get better each time I practiced. He was right. I worked with all the grade levels, and each Wednesday I joined Miss Netto's first grade class. I've noticed I'm more confident speaking in front of lots of people, and I can, I can make it fun. We, when we work with the first graders, their favorite breath is the wave breath. Would you like me to show you? So it's an option to go as fast as you want, um, as long as there's enough space. So when we breathe in, we want to go up, and when we breathe out, we want to go down. Breathe in, breathe out, breathe in, breathe out, breathe in, breathe out.
My favorite part about being a leader is to watch the younger students create their own breaths. A first grader named Prince created his own breath and led the whole class through it. Miss Netto even recorded some of her students modeling a variety of the breaths. Mindfulness is for everyone, no matter how young or how old. We hope you enjoyed learning some breaths today to take with you in the future.
Mindfulness has helped me when I need a minute to calm down, relax, or just when I need a break. I've learned a lot of different ta, different tactics for when I'm in a stressful moment. It helped me during my MCAS to keep focus whenever I needed like a little break, and I don't get as mad as I used to because of the breathing tactics I learned.
Mindfulness, does it work? Mindfulness has helped me in staying calm when I'm stressed. It helped me in better relationships with teachers, and it helped me remember questions on a test, because I focus on one side of my body, and I focus on the other, and it helps.
Thank you so much to all of you, and thanks for being patient with the adjustments of the microphones. Before the students leave us, I'm wondering if, we're wondering if the school committee has any questions that we can answer, or if you have any comments to make, this would be a great time.
Sure, yeah. Thank you for the presentation, colleagues, any questions or comments? Ms. Everton?
Yeah, I want to really thank you all for being with us tonight, talking in front of a big group of people, and you brought a real crowd out with you tonight. They're here for you, not for us, I promise you that. But sharing all those techniques with us, I think, like a lot of you, my family has been exploring a lot with mindfulness, and my daughter came home from Patton School and talked to me about her breathing buddy, and at first, as a parent, I said, what does that mean? That sounds strange. And then she explained it was a stuffed animal that she put on her belly to go up and down and watch her breathing, and I said, that sounds very nice, and sounds really lovely, but the idea that it's helping you in school and out of school. Just last night, I played a five-minute mindfulness piece before I went to bed, and so it's all, all, there's a lot of learning there, and I really appreciate your particularly sharing the ways that it's been helping you, and want to thank all of the parents for bringing out their, their kids tonight to help us understand more about what the impacts are like. For us, as we sit here trying to decide, what are we doing? Is this, is this good? But I see so many examples, and I want to particularly acknowledge, being nervous, talking in front of people makes a ton of sense. You're not alone in that one, but you also really are nailing it, and so thank you so much for being with us tonight and sharing that.
Ms. Fritz?
I want to thank you all for coming to and for presenting, and before this meeting started, Dr. McGee and I were speaking about when we had to do public speaking. I didn't even like to do it in college, when I had, had to take a class on public speaking, and I was in college, and I hated it. You guys are at an age where you're so much younger, and you're already doing a lot better than we ever did, so this is such a wonderful tool for you to have. Might be scary, but you're doing a great job, and I liked hearing about how it's helping you in school with tests, just making you less stressful, and that's what we want to see going on. So thank you very much for coming.
Other comments, questions? Thank you so much for the presentation, you all did a great job. Public speaking is hard, and, you know, you get the hang of it after a while, but it, you never lose those jitters. I can assure you of that, but I like the stress relief exercises you led us through. I think it's important to take time out of your day, even for five minutes, just to take time for yourself. There's a lot of anxiety going from class to class and getting ready for school in the morning, so, so great job, and thank you so much for presenting to us. Dr. Sawyer, any further comments?
Thanks, I just want to echo the school committee's comments, and we actually have some certificates here for the students, so if they want to come up, be careful not to trip on that wire. Maybe fist bump our school committee members, and they'll give you the certificate, and then we appreciate you being here tonight. How about a round of applause? Excellent job. Excellent job. Excellent job. Excellent job. Nice job. You're welcome. You're all right. Anna, nice job. Great job. Outstanding. Thank you so much. Great work. That's okay. Nice job. All right, now you got to be on. Isaiah, there you go. Thank you. Great work. Nice job, you too.
Take care, young man. Take care, thank you so much. Appreciate you so much, okay? Appreciate you so much. Take care. All right.
Thanks, man. So that's our presentation.
It's not fair to go after that.
Tough act to follow.
No, thank you. Thank you so much. So we're going to take a few minutes to share the story of, really, the year, though we're coming to the end, as I mentioned in the report, of year three of our partnership with Whole School Mindfulness, and more and more, we're seeing the benefit for, to not only the younger stu, our youngest students, but also our students at the high school. And right now, we're just looking for ways to get Jordan to all schools, and he's going to talk a little bit about his schedule and whatnot, but we will, the slide that is in front of you, I saw this posted on a little bulletin board in Jordan's office, so I took a picture a few months back, because I think that tells part of the story as well, as far as how mindfulness is helping those students who have had the opportunity to practice and learn how it's benefiting them. So I have, Jordan Grinstein, as you know, is our mindfulness director, and Mark Waxman is the whole school, co-founder of Whole School Mindfulness, and as Mark and Jordan share, I'm just going to go through the slides, we're not going to read them to you, but I'm going to let Mark take it from here.
Yeah, thanks. And I just want to start by saying, as a former Shrewsbury resident, former school leader, not former superintendent, but current school committee member since the last time I was here, and parent of two teenage sons in, in high school, I just really appreciate the, all the levels of, of people I've interacted with here, from the superintendent to the school committee, Dr. Lozot, and, yeah, I just, I, you all probably take it for granted, but as someone who gets to work across and see a lot of different districts and schools, it inspires me, what I see here, and so I want to say thank you for being partners to us. Yeah, so, yeah, I don't think I'm going to read every word of this, but we did a nice, robust data collection in January, we'll do another one at the end of the year, but we got some good data, and I'd like just to highlight some of that data for you. I think we go to the next slide. Yeah, again, maybe one bullet per category here. So sixty-five sta, more than sixty-five staff responded, which was a good number, and over ninety percent of those teachers agreed that Jordan has had a positive impact on the school. I think we could stop there with that stat, and, but there's more. And a hundred fifty students, most of them being fourth graders, so you know, younger students being surveyed, this is not an easy thing to do, to survey younger students. Eighty percent said it would be helpful for other students, so I think that, that is a very strong number as well. And then we even got some of the high school students, the cheerleading team that Jordan worked with. I know the number, a hundred percent thought that it would be useful for other, oh, I have it here, or other people, other students to participate in, that they found it, that they enjoyed the program. Yeah. What do we have next? Oops, we have, we won't. We have quite a bit of qualitative data.
That's in your report.
Yeah, and I'm not going to read that to you, unless you want me to. Okay, thank you. Yeah, it's worth looking at. Yeah, thanks. Is there another one?
Sorry, on my screen. That's interesting. I'm seeing something different, the suggested areas of improvement.
I think it's slow, to load or something.
And, yeah, go to the...
So, the slide that I'm seeing here, but you're not seeing, suggested areas of improvement from students, a couple of the comments that we gleaned from the survey data, I'm sorry, I'm not sure what's happening on the slides.
Why don't you try to reconnect to the Apple TV, Dr. Lozot, maybe put it, and then reconnect, maybe that'll...
This is her computer, and I thank her for helping.
No problem.
Where we phone a friend.
Absolutely.
And I can talk as she's doing that. We pulled a few quotes, and, and there weren't many to Jordan's credit, but these are only students, these are the students who have had experiences. But a few noted, it has not helped me because I get bored during it, but it does feel peaceful and quiet. Um, I'm sorry.
There we go.
Thank you.
I would use that.
Okay, super. Long story short, I just feel sleepy. While I don't really have any stories to tell about mindfulness helping people, I haven't had situations where I needed mindfulness in school, and I haven't seen any situations where other people needed it. From staff, looking for every school to have a mindfulness director one day a week, so they had some scheduling recommendations, asking Jordan to share more visuals that teachers then can then bring back to their classrooms. One comment of a high school teacher feeling less connected to Jordan than past directors. And finally, I think that if, if the mindfulness director could be featured to lead mindfulness at the start of every staff meeting, that would have more visibility and reach. So back to, actually, on to Jordan, to tell your story.
Hello, really happy to be here and meet all of you.
Jordan, can I just say one other thing? Sorry for interrupting, just one. Just, just to frame this, you know, we're now working in six schools across the country, and I also want to just say that what Jordan is doing here is pretty unique, like, it is advanced, and I feel like it's also just the tip of the iceberg, both things, so I just want to congratulate what you've already done in four months this year.
Great, great. I want to thank all administrators, educators, and staff members who have been, who I've collaborated with to create this programming. I can't do it myself, it takes a lot of emailing and a lot of coordinating. To get into all eight schools, the mindfulness programming for Shrewsbury Public Schools for this year is robust and diverse, and I'll talk a little bit about the diversity in, because each school is a little bit different, obviously. There are more than a hundred and fifty fourth grade mindfulness ambassadors or wellness champions in all the elementary schools. They lead trauma-informed, they give options, as you saw earlier tonight, like, close your eyes if you want to, you can stand up, you can sit down, you could make yourself comfortable, there's many different options that they're trained to give, so everyone feels included, to engage with the mindfulness in a way that feels safe for them. And age-appropriate, which means they're learning the nuances of leading to a kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third grade class, and leading to adults at school committee meeting. If you look at this picture, the, the option is given there, one student sits upright and participates to whatever degree he wants to, and the classroom teachers are able to participate. You can see a pair of legs that are much longer than the others, and so what a gift to that classroom teacher that they get to get a moment of wellness for themselves, a moment, a reset for themselves, led by the fourth graders, and it sort of normalizes the practice that mindfulness is available for anyone of any age. Here are just some images to see it in action, this is, this fourth grader Liam, actually led here, he came here and led that here, this is at Patton Pride, he's got a microphone in his hand, leading to an entire school community of parents and an assembly outdoors. There's some Beal, some shots of us at Beal as well. Over on the left, there's a partner exercise, that's a fourth grader partnering with a first or second grader, and the, the fourth graders really enjoy going into younger classes and leading partner activities, collaboration, teamwork, trust, communication, building these types, and they, they're so skillful, they're such great facilitators, that they name all these things, and, and they're able to lock in the learning through question and answer afterwards. The middle slide is a, can we go back? The, the middle slide is somewhat a young boy leading to a assembly at Beal. There's an embodiment, there's a posture, queuing different body parts and growing awareness of body imbalance. And this is Aditya, he was here this evening, leading to his entire school community, and there's a shot of the assembly style that we did at Beal, three classes coming together in the neighborhood area. This is Patton, fourth grader's providing digital workshop for Floral Street, this is a Zoom call, I thought that was... first or second grader, and the, the fourth graders really enjoy going into younger classes and leading partner activities, collaboration, teamwork, trust, communication, building these types. And they, they're so skillful, they're such great facilitators, that they name all these things, and, and they're able to lock in the learning through question and answer afterwards. That, the middle slide is a, can we go back? The, the middle slide is somewhat a young boy leading to a assembly at Beal. There's an embodiment, there's a posture, cueing different body parts and growing awareness of body imbalance. And this is Aditya, he was here this evening, leading to his entire school community, and there's a shot of the assembly style that we did at Beal, three classes coming together in the neighborhood area. This is Patton, fourth grader's providing digital workshop for Floral Street. This is a Zoom call. I thought that was fantastic and phenomenal, and it landed well for this Floral Street kindergarten class they are participating. For Sherwood and Oak, eighth grade boys group weekly meeting, you saw two of them, Isaiah and Ahmad. Weekly sessions for the bright students through grades five through eight, as well as fifth and sixth grade morning meetings, and team visits for grades five through eight. Over at the high school, providing in-person workshops and on-demand resources for cheerleading, for girls soccer, for ninth and grade health classes, as well as ELE and special education students. For administrators, teachers, staff, and parents, I presented and guided practice for a district leadership team, all elementary staff professional development, some staff meetings at Sherwood and Patton, as well as middle and high school PE health, some all school meetings, as well as school council meetings, and supporting diversity, equity, inclusion, belonging, district initiatives, and strategic priorities. Mindfulness and developing an awareness around our social identities is really helpful. Mindfulness supports. And here's a sample Wednesday class, starting in the morning at Sherwood and Oak, going over to another elementary school, finishing the day, training fourth graders throughout Patton.
That concludes our presentation. We, we're, we're hopeful to continue the partnership with Whole School Mindfulness. We really believe and hear from students, those who have had an opportunity to give us feedback and staff, that they feel more resilient and focused and more attentive and aware. And we feel that programming such as this is a proactive way to build lifelong skills, and we're grateful to have this opportunity.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate the report. Colleagues, any questions or comments? Ms. Fritz?
Thank you for presenting. I know this is something that we're very interested in, and a few weeks ago, we had students present, and they were amazing public speakers, and they told us that they learned it through their mindfulness, which is something we didn't know, as, you know, I, at least I didn't know, as a school committee member, I don't have young children. We were blown away by what they have learned and have been taught through that. So I think there's so many things that can come out of this besides stress release, or, you know, just lots of things. I think it's that holistic approach to education, so I'm really glad that we're doing that, we're moving it forward. I did have one question. Could you explain what trauma-informed, age-appropriate mindfulness, just hearing the word trauma, could you give us an example of what that is?
Mm-hmm, yeah. The examples that we saw tonight were these young folks giving options. A lot of mindfulness cues out there are, sit up straight, close your eyes, clear your mind. And to me, those cues are not trauma-informed, they're not inclusive of folks who don't feel safe closing their eyes for whatever reason. So for me, it's being, it's including everyone, no matter what they've, they've experienced in their past, or what they're going through currently. It's cueing mindfulness, being, facilitating a mindful experience for someone else in such a way that it's inclusive of, of everyone. If you don't feel comfortable sitting right now, you can stand up and do this practice. If you don't feel comfortable closing your eyes, you can open them. And to give cues in such a way that people are able to engage with the mindfulness practices, however, regardless of what they're going through in the moment.
Perfect, thank you. And just, I think it's great that we're hav-, that young, giving them tools and to use as they move forward. And as, and I know you're one person going to all these schools, I think as we go through this program, as a school committee member, I'd like to see more at the high school level, where we're seeing a lot of behavioral health and mental health issues, that they need the tools and experience. But I know right now, for sure, one person, but I think, you know, for me, as we move forward, that would be an area I'd like to see more with. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Dr. McGee?
So, there's a lot to like here. And as Ms. Fritz said, if, if it was just sold as a public speaking program, I would think it would be a good investment, just from what we saw with those fourth graders a few weeks ago. So there are some effects that we're, we are seeing that I think are really obvious and of value. I'm concerned that we're, in a few minutes, going to hear a report about the mental health of the district, and how seriously it is, it is becoming as an issue for us to address. And I think that we need to find a way of connecting the metrics for measuring that. The anxiety visits, the depression visits, the suicidal ideation, the whole list there needs to be connected in some way to what you are doing. And we need to find a way to see that you're moving that needle in some way with this program. I think that that would multiply the value of this program for us. And I think a word that was used in the report that we received that I think is very important is resilience. I, I think that many of us are concerned that behind the mental issues that many of our students are experiencing is a lack of resilience, a sensitivity that derails them. And building resilience in our students, I think, is, is something that would be very important to emphasize. So those are, those are just my impressions here, as we try to, among other things, build resilience in this program, because we're, you know, we're in the salad days right now of budgeting, but a crisis is going to come, and you don't want to be the first to go. So I think that those are ways in which I think you can enhance the value of what you do.
Further questions or comments? Okay, well, thank you so much for the presentation. I'm curious, Ms. Fritz mentioned the public speakers that were here two weeks ago, very impressive. I, I'm curious how you prep them for something like that, because they were, they were projecting very well, like, in terms of, like, their engagement with us, the eye contact was there. So I'm just curious, you know, how you prep.
How I prepared them for the, the previous presentation to the school committee?
Just in general.
In general?
General, yeah.
Ambassador program.
It starts with a push into their classroom and giving them the opportunity to share amongst their peers, a small group, practice, practice teaching, sharing with one another, a feedback process of what did you like about this person's teaching, and then a self-reflective, what I would do differently next time to make it even better is, and go through, go through that process, and then pulling them out of the classroom and bringing them to a younger class, third grade, and giving them the opportunity with my co-facilitation, my support, and eventually, like, I tell them, I'm not going to say anything, you're going to lead the whole thing, and they just take it away.
That's great. No, blown away by their presentation a couple of weeks ago, so thank you for that. And then also, you mentioned becoming an ambassador, like a mindfulness ambassador. There's about a hundred and fifty, I think, a hundred and, yeah, a hundred and fifty fourth graders. How do you go about kind of selecting those ambassadors? Is it more of a, their enthusiasm for the program, or how does that, how does that work?
Yep, so at Patton, it just, it was everyone. All, all the students wanted to become a part of it. And fourth graders, it was, it was really easy to work with those fourth grade teachers. I'm housed at Patton, have office there, so spend a lot of time there. And across district, it was teacher, admin, selected. It was, it's a little different flavor at each of the school, how the mindfulness champions get selected, whether they're, whether they, they want to do it themselves versus an adult in the building saying, like, would you like to try this out? I think this would be beneficial for you.
That's good. That's good leadership opportunity for those students, and certainly more public speaking for them as well. Thank you for the presentation, appreciate it.
I just want to echo what Dr. McGee said, and I had in my notes, and I forgot to say it, I think the whole resiliency piece is another thing that I'm concerned with as a parent, and, you know, we're going to be disappointed in life, and we're going to have to learn with these tools. Is there something that is part of what you're doing now that does talk about resilience and disappointment and moving forward?
Mm-hmm, a lot of the, you can, the qualitative feedback from the surveys, a lot of students talk about naming a problem as big or small. There's a, there's a qualitative data about that. And just overall stress and how their awareness of their stress and the toolbox, the toolkit that they have includes now awareness practices, breath work practices, relaxation, liquid light visualization. So that's where I would go, is to the, is to the surveys for the, for the feedback there, and I specifically name it when, through the, through the teaching across district.
Great, thank you.
Okay, great. Dr. Sawyer, further comments?
Thank you, appreciate the, the presentation very much. It was great to have the students and, and really to get a sense of, and I know Jordan has been, all across the district in different ways, has been very much in demand, which is always a good sign for me, when you bring something on board and say, here's an opportunity, and when people are really scrambling to try to get him to come to their classroom, that's always a very good sign. I think that, you know, this is something that, when it was brought on board, Dr. Lozot reaching out to start this partnership a few years back, I thought it was a very innovative approach. We wanted to try it out. Again, there's been some interruptions because of the pandemic, but to see this in place throughout the entire year this year, really pleased that we're seeing the impact that it's having on such a variety of different students. I think now, and obviously it remains to be seen, and that school community are making a decision, and I'll be thinking about my recommendations, final recommendations for the budget on April thirteenth. We certainly want to continue to partner with Whole School Mindfulness. They've been very generous the last few years in terms of carrying much of the cost. And if we are able to move the needle on what we're supporting, I'm looking forward to being able, and with Dr. Lozot coming back into her position full-time next year, to be able to think about how we can parse out Jordan's ability to be connected with different levels, whether it's, you know, maybe a focus on the high school in a particular part of the year, maybe middle elementary, along with some other groups that are going in an ongoing way. I thought some of the testimonials were very powerful, and I, and I think that, you know, one of the things I like in terms, especially this ambassador program, and this idea of developing a toolkit, where students don't necessarily have to have it all the time, once they've developed it, they might need reminders that a teacher can remind them of, or someone else can remind them of, or a paraprofessional or whomever, as opposed to, you know, feeling that they need the mindfulness director to come to help them do that. We're, we're building that independence, and that's something that, if we can start to develop that in our students across the spectrum of grade levels, over time, that's going to become, I think, very robust. So something we're looking forward to as this evolves further. So again, thank you very much, really appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thanks so much.
Have a good night.
All right. Next item on our agenda is a time-scheduled appointment. It is regarding, a report regarding mental and behavioral health. During this report, we'll have an update regarding the ongoing concerns with regard to mental and behavioral health of students of Shrewsbury Public Schools. Joining us tonight is the Assistant Superintendent for Student Services, Ms. Meg Belcito, also our Assistant Director of Special Education and Pupil Personnel Services, Megan Bartlett, and our Director of School Nursing, Ms. Noel Freeman. Welcome.
Thanks. Thank you for having us. Let me just start showing. It's now asking for a password. Didn't ask for the password earlier. Can't help it with that. Oh, there it is. That's weird. Oh, here comes, I need to have the rescue. So if you click up here. Nope, that's what it did. Okay, click screen mirror. Yep. And I click slightly further, and you have to pass. Okay. Nice. Is it uppercase? It's a team member. You need tiered interventions for logging on. If that doesn't work, then we can just trade lessons again. Is it uppercase P?
Nope.
It should remember my computer, correct? It should. You're doing everything right, it's just sometimes technology.
The thing seemed to kind of reset itself at one point during.
There was a network outage.
Hey, Mr. Wensley, could you just take a two-minute recess?
Yeah.
Just allow them to get set up and.
Call a two-minute recess, and we'll be back. Yeah, call the meeting back to order, and we'll resume with our presentation. Thank you.
Well, thank you for having us. Glad to be here tonight. A lot has been said recently about the mental health crisis that's happening across the country. We're here to share some information about how that crisis is playing out in our schools. This information is sobering and may be difficult for some people to hear. However, it is important that we make the community aware of the current state of our students' mental and behavioral health, what we currently have in place for our schools, and what we hope to add in the coming year. So our return to school. As we began the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, we were filled with many emotions. Our community was both excited and happy to return to full in-person learning, while also worried and concerned about balancing the ongoing health pandemic. After two years of educational disruption, we knew that we would be facing challenges, but not having been through this before, we could not have anticipated the impact that the pandemic would have on our community. As much as we desired a return to normal, we quickly realized that was not going to be possible, and our efforts turned to immense challenges that we never could have anticipated. As much as we craved normal, our students, families, and staff required immediate support and action. While we will be reporting on what is occurring locally, we want to indicate that nobody worries alone, and we are here to support you. The U.S. Surgeon General stated the following in December on his advisory around the youth mental health. Recent research covering eighty thousand youth globally found that the depressive and anxiety symptoms doubled during the pandemic, with twenty-five percent of our youth expressing, experiencing depressive symptoms, and twenty percent experiencing anxiety symptoms. In early twenty-twenty-one, emergency department visits in the U.S. for suspected suicide attempts were forty, fifty-one percent higher for adolescent girls, and four percent higher for adolescent boys compared to the same time period in early twenty-nineteen. So in Shrewsbury, the students' physical and emotional safety is always our first priority. We want to share that all staff are responsible for creating a sense of belonging and connectedness with our students. However, some students require additional supports and services to maintain their mental health. Throughout our district, we have a number of roles and programming that support mental and behavioral health. These do include our school adjustment counselors, our school psychologists, our clinical coordinators who are BCVAs, school nurses, and our bright programs that are located at Sherwood, Oak, and the high school. In Shrewsbury, we've been utilizing a multi-tiered systems of supports that we refer to as MTSS for at least five years now. As you can see from this graphic, our tiered responses need to be affiliated not only with our academics, but also for our social, emotional, and behavioral needs of our students. The following slides will spotlight that for you. In this graphic, we've broken down the supports that are available to support students in tiers. At the bottom and the most basic level, all children have access to our psychologists, adjustment counselors, and our nurses. This is a general sense. The psychs and the adjustment counselors provide consultation to the classroom and whole group lessons. Our nurses can support the daily visits to their health offices. They also sit on the building-level SEL committees. the daily visits to their health offices. They also sit on the building-level SEL committees. Tier two includes what's provided in tier one, but students at any given level may need extra support. So that's what we call core plus more. This may include small group intervention, behavior support plans, classroom management... outside providers, as well as those clinical coordinators who are BCBA's. And then finally, in tier three, again, we have tier one and tier two, and we add this additional level. This does not necessarily equate to special education, though. Staff in tier three manage crisis and behavioral episodes at the building level. They analyze data and look for trends. They conduct functional behavioral assessments, referrals to our Bright program, and referrals to wraparound community supports. In continuing with the multi-tiered systems of support, here is an example of an asset map when we look at our middle school. This slide is a representation of learning, social emotional learning, and mental health. It's important that we make a distinction between SEL and mental health. SEL is across all tiers, and it is the skills we try to teach our students. Social emotional learning refers to the set of skills that's an important part of the student's education and human development. Our students will receive explicit instruction to acquire and apply the knowledge, the skills, and the attitudes necessary to develop appropriate relationships with themselves and others. Mental health includes our emotional, psychological, and social well-being. It affects how we think, feel, and act, how we handle stress, and how we relate to others and make healthy choices. Mental health issues can be acute or chronic and impact daily living and functioning. Although the terms are often used interchangeably, poor mental health and mental illness are not the same. A person can experience poor mental health and not be diagnosed with a mental illness. Likewise, a person diagnosed with a mental illness can experience periods of physical, mental, and social well-being. Use grief as an example. If you're grieving the loss of a loved one, you may have poor mental health, but you do not necessarily have mental illness. And when you look at the tiers, as we've described here, academically, for example, at our middle school level, at tier one, all students can receive de-cap accommodations, just as one example. If you go to tier two for core plus more, you might be looking at schedule changes or a student that might benefit from the co-teaching model. If a student is requiring even more intensive support, it's core plus more plus more. That might be utilizing our Bright program. It could be utilizing our essential skills program, or, for example, our substantially separate ELC program.
So, as we begin to look at the information on the upcoming slides, we just want to acknowledge that the data on these slides does represent children in our schools. In our offices, every day, we hear individual student stories. The first thing when we do when we hear a story is ask who the child in crisis is. We ask for their name, so we can search on Power School, see their picture, and put a face to that name. Again, we just want to take a moment to remind everyone who's listening that every number and data point we are about to discuss represents Shrewsbury students who are struggling. As Meg mentioned earlier, when we came back to school in the fall, we could not have anticipated the level of distress that some of our students are currently experiencing. However, from the very beginning of the 2021-22 school year, we've seen students with a marked increase in mental health challenges, including intense feelings of anxiety and stress, depression, self-harm, and suicidal or homicidal ideations. Families are reporting that they are observing their children having increased feelings of isolation, withdrawal from daily activities, and difficulty with healthy sleep and eating habits. Our school staff are noticing an increase in aggressive behavior, which is easily observed with external acts of dysregulation, property destruction, assault of language, hitting, and fighting. The reality is that while we have seen all of the above in isolation in the past, we are now seeing it at all of our school buildings with an increase of intensity and frequency. So, the next few slides will present data that we hope will illustrate what we, and more importantly, what our students are experiencing. So, this slide represents the clinical rounds, which are offered on a bi-weekly basis by our district's clinical coordinators, who are board-certified behavior analysts, or BCBA's that Meg was mentioning. And the meetings are conducted with the support of our consulting's child psychiatrist. At the meetings, staff can discuss the challenges that a student is having, along with any supports that are currently in place at school. And the clinical coordinators and psychiatrists then can offer suggestions for additional interventions for those students. As you can see by the data points illustrated here, we've had a steady increase in referrals, seeking input of these professionals on ways to support students. There's a little dip here in the 2019 column, but that is really only because 2019, thanks to COVID, was not a full school year. Cases that are brought to clinical rounds often involve the most challenging mental or behavioral presentations in students across all of our buildings, and the suggestions that come out of rounds can include things like instituting positive behavior plans, creative classroom management strategies, social skills instruction, seeking outside mental health supports if not already in place, et cetera. So, oftentimes, they're moving up on those tiers of support. This slide does not include historical data, but actually gives an idea of where we are right now in this school year. Throughout the year, and in particular in the more recent months, we've become aware of an increase in students who are having feelings of hopelessness and an increase in unsafe behaviors. Although we don't have hard numbers from previous years, the consensus among counselors, nurses, and administrators is that what we are experiencing now is at a higher and more intense level than what we've seen before, and we are obviously very concerned about that. Fortunately, just like when a person experiences a physical illness, there are medical supports and services available for people who are experiencing a mental health emergency. As you can see here, since the start of the school year, 73 students have been referred from school or home to mental, for mental health reasons, to either emergency mental health, youth mobile crisis, or the emergency room. More than half of these students have been then referred further for hospitalization of some sort. Some of the students receive inpatient services, and some are in outpatient settings. And many were referred to services, but for one reason or another, were unable to access those services. One of the more alarming data points here is the number of students who have been screened specifically for suicidal ideation at school. Again, this is very concerning to us, and it's one of the reasons that we hosted the webinar with Riverside Trauma Center just last evening. This chart is a snapshot of mental health-related visits to our health offices as captured by our nurse's electronic health record. As you can see, over 500, almost 600 individual students have been seen for various reasons, and over 1,000 visits have been recorded. As I've said in nursing reports in the past, it's often hard for nurses to capture an accurate number of mental health-related visits, because the real reason that kids are coming to the nurse is sometimes masked by somatic complaints like a headache or a stomach ache. Our health offices are definitely considered by many students to be a safe space, and they find reasons to visit and check in with the nurses quite often. Because of this, nurses can at times be the first to recognize that those frequent somatic complaints are really indicative of an emotional or mental health struggle, and they then move on to collaborate with the student's family and counselors or others in the building to try to help that student. Often, some of our older students are more willing and more aware of the reason for the way they're feeling, and they're more willing to just come right up and say, "I'm feeling anxious," or "I'm having a panic attack," et cetera. So, those types of visits are easier to capture in the record. In any case, it's very clear that the numbers here represent some, but definitely not all of the mental health-related nurse visits that we're seeing.
So, in a nutshell, it's our responsibility to keep kids safe. We want to partner with families and community members at large to do so. We need to have conversations with our kids and have them know that there are steps out there to manage their mental health. Supporting our students needs to be a wraparound approach, as mental health impacts all aspects of functioning across all environments. Our schools can help shift the narrative that there are multiple pathways for help. Social connections are the biggest protective factor. Families are at the center of this chain for a reason. Families have a huge impact on children's mental health. Talk to your children, ask questions, listen, and acknowledge their feelings. It's okay not to be okay. Monitor social media. And if you have questions or concerns about talking with your child, know that there are staff in our schools that can point you in the right direction for support. To our community members, we want to remind you that treatment works. Seek out mental health providers. We realize that there are long wait lists right now. Please put your name on them. You can use our William James interface connection to support this process, and as a reminder, please talk to your primary care provider and seek support.
The American School Counselor Association recommends a ratio of one counselor for every 250 students at school. Our current student-to-adjustment counselor ratio at our middle schools is about 300 to one, and at Shrewsbury High School, the ratio is about 900 to one. We do have an additional counselor in our Bright program at both the middle school and high school level. Those counselors collaborate with the school adjustment counselors on some of the highest need students, and at the high school level, there is further collaboration between adjustment counselors and guidance counselors to support a variety of student needs. At each of the elementary schools, there is one full-time adjustment counselor, so the ratio is closer to 250 to one at those buildings. We did begin increasing support across the district in this area somewhere around the 2018-19 school year, because we were seeing at that time an increase in student mental health needs. So, even pre-pandemic, we were seeing this and starting to increase supports. And the current challenge we're experiencing has really shined a light on the fact that even more supports are needed for our students who struggle with their mental health. The Massachusetts Department of Public Health recommends that the school nurse-to-student ratio is one full-time equivalent certified nurse. In each building with 250 to 500 students, and in buildings with more than 500 students, they recommend adding .1 FTE for each 50 students. So, it really kind of comes down to a 500 to one ratio. As a result of Comprehensive School Health Services Workforce Investment Grant Funding, that was just approved in the late fall of this school year, we were able to allocate funds to the high school, Oak and Sherwood, and our ratios there are now closer to meeting this recommendation for ratios. We're utilizing the grant funds to expand part-time school nurses in those buildings. So, we currently have three full-time school nurses at the high school, and that makes their ratio about 600 to one. At both Sherwood and Oak, we now have 1.8 FTE nurses, so that makes the ratio there about 550 to one. Our large elementary schools, Florlin Beal, have 1.3 FTEs, which equates to the one full-time nurse, and then a second nurse for two hours each day to help out during the busiest times in those buildings, and that brings their ratios to about 1 to 500, and the smaller elementary buildings each have one full-time nurse.
So, as Noel highlighted, we've been adding resources to the clinical teams for the past several years. We wanted to again acknowledge the work of Noel, who secured the grant of $100,000 a year over the next 10 years. This was secured in 2019, correct?
Yes.
Yes. We'd, of course, like to also thank the school community for their ongoing support for the mental health requests, and we're also able to use some of the funding through the elementary and secondary school emergency relief funds, but we know that we still need to recommend and hope for more. So, to make a lasting impression on our school community, we created a number of improvement plans that include increasing awareness and continued conversations with students and families about mental health, using inclusive language and behaviors. These discussions will allow us to continue to promote positive, safe, and affirming school environments. We need to expand our social emotional learning tier-one programs and other evidence-based approaches that promote healthy pro-social development. Examples include universal design for learning, purposeful people, character strong, and mindfulness practices. Support and expand digital media literacy education, including the monitoring of children's use of social media. We need to learn to recognize the signs of changes in the mental and physical health among our students, including trauma and behavior changes. Continue to build the district's evidence-based prevention practices and trauma-informed mental health care while building a continuum of supports to meet their needs, students' needs. Support the mental health of all our school personnel. Opportunities include establishing realistic and manageable workloads, student-to-staff ratios, and specific role-based professional development. To reach the level of impact, we're making the following recommendations for mental and behavioral health staff. Two, school adjustment counselors at Shrewsbury High School to address student needs and increase caseloads. This would make our ratios per counselor 450 students or a counselor per grade level. One adjustment counselor at the middle school level to respond to the increased caseloads and needs there, making the counselor caseloads there about 250 students each. Two district clinical coordinators or board-certified behavior analysts, doubling the number of BCBA's to provide support for significant student behavioral challenges. Adding a director of Clinical Counseling, Mental Health, and Behavioral Health Services to coordinate the work of our adjustment counselors, our psychologists, and our clinical coordinators. One district social worker to address the significant family needs and barriers while coordinating with outside social service agencies. Recently, we had the opportunity to attend the A statewide conference for special education administrators. They presented on mental health of our students, and we thought it's important to share this slide of observable behaviors. This is a list of reminders that we want to share with the community about the warning signs to notice if someone may be in distress and may need to seek additional support.
And we just want to wrap up by sharing this list of resources, so that it's on people's screens at home, just as a reminder that there is help out there if you need it. One of the important points made by Mr. McCauley on the webinar last evening was that it's a sign of strength to know when help is needed and to reach out, and we want to encourage people to do that. This is certainly not an exhaustive list, but it does include some phone numbers and websites that might be helpful. These resources can also be found on the mental health web, the pages on our website, and we also want to remind people that our school nurses and school counselors can be resources if families feel more comfortable reaching out to someone at school to start a conversation when someone is struggling. So, thank you, and we will be happy to try to answer any questions that you might have.
Great. Thank you for the report, colleagues. Any questions or comments? Ms. Everden?
Yeah, I want to thank you very much. I think it's incredibly important that we talk about this more and often, and at greater depth at all sorts of levels. And obviously, some level of our community turns into school committee means, but I hardly think this is the best forum for this. There's lots of other good and important places to be having these conversations. So, I've a couple of questions, kind of mixed with comments. I think it's important that you all, as you said, from nursing to, you know, counseling to hiring the staff that are doing these things, are very, very close to this, and there are, for those, part of the challenge, I think, for families trying to seek services is a feeling that it is an overwhelming acronym soup. And I just list a couple of the ones you guys, you all had tonight, right? YMCs, BCBA's, ELCs, Bright, DCAPs, and I feel like I sit in a role, and I should know what those are, and I'm getting confused. I'm like, which ones are which? Some of those are staff, some of those are programs, some of those are people, and as best as we can figure out how to, and it's not just, you can't demystify a very complicated provisional services in our society, but to make easy pathways for access, because even the many numbers, the many places, like how we can make... Because even the many numbers, the many places, like how we can make, one of the things I loved when we started talking about the William James Program, call one number, right? And they could help. And so as we think about more communications with families, the easiest, whatever you can do to think about that, and I encourage families and those who are listening to not let that be the barrier, to say, you don't need to call and know what you need. You need to call and say you need help. And there are others who need to know what all those different levels of services are and sort of what a young person in your life may be experiencing and how to help get you there. Two questions. I wonder, I remember as I joined the school committee, sitting down with you, Meg, and going over the recent, at that time, three years ago, the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, and the rates of suicidal ideation stuck in my head as, wow, that is much higher than I want it to be. And I wonder, given COVID, is that something the state is still doing? Or do we have any of that data to be tracking? Because certainly, the rates of those who are going to the hospital is up, right? That data is helpful. But what are young people self-reporting? Is there anything you could share about that or help us on the timing of when those things exist and happen?
We just talked about that earlier today. Noel actually plans on reaching out because we do not have the most recent information from the survey.
So the survey was, the data that you would have looked at was 2019 data. We did readminister the survey in December of 2021, so just a couple months ago. And we are waiting for the report to come back. We're hoping that we'll have that data by the end of April, and we will certainly share that data when it's available. And we too are curious to see that comparison kind of pre-pandemic and now.
Yeah. If I can do one more, Mr. Cherthie. I think it's, I really appreciate the message that, you know, parents and families are and should be at the center of this, but many parents and families don't know how to have these conversations or feel scared that talking about the things that seem alarming are somehow, you know, reinforcing. I know there's lots of suggests there's other ways that they should be thinking about these things, but I just wonder, beyond our efforts to kind of educate parents and holding webinars like last night, seem wonderfully important steps in that direction. What are you thinking about in terms of the role for our educators and professional staff to actually talk with kids about these things while they're with us for six hours a day in terms of programming or learning opportunities? And I always worry when these things fall to like, well, in health class, we may talk about these things. And so what maybe you can share with families who are listening tonight, what are the ways in which their young person may hear about some of this and know that they can reach out to help? Maybe they show up to the nurse's office with headaches, but they're not actually identifying the problem. Do they realize that what they're really doing? Or what are the ways that you're instigating, come for help?
If you don't mind, Meg, would you like to tell them about what you're working with, the psychologists and adjustment counselors?
Sure. So what we're doing at the classroom level is really that Tier One. We're talking about our social emotional well-being and how we take care of ourselves. And that's going to change developmental level. We'll dive in deeper around bigger emotions, bigger feelings as students are older. Currently, at the elementary school level, I'm partnering with the director of preschool through grade four, Jackie Marcello, and we're working with a group of school adjustment counselors and psychologists at district level, and they're feeding in from their SEL committees at their building level to embed the curriculum that Shrewsbury has inherently been using for SEL throughout the years and mirroring that with character strong work, where we're talking about like, character traits essentially, so like cooperation, things like that. And we're pairing that with direct lessons so that we are consistently using the language within our school community about recognizing what our emotions are and pairing it with a solution. It's okay to have a blue day, to feel sad. It's okay to have a blue day and feel tired. What's a strategy we can use to get us out of that mood? And it's okay to be overexcited. But sometimes we need to sit down and learn because it's time to do writing. So what's a strategy to calm our bodies? So that's really how we're doing that. If someone does need more intensive work, we would then talk to our clinical teams at the building level and design a plan to address that more privately or with a small group of kids that are experiencing the same thing.
Thank you very much. Thanks.
Good question, Mr. Powich.
Two questions, time likes. First of all, just thank you for this report and for the work that you all do. I am very supportive of the new positions that have been proposed in the budget, you know, and I think, you know, from our perspective as a school committee, what we fund is what we value. Our budget is a manifestation of what we think is important. I think it is absolutely necessary to do what we can to fill where there may be gaps. And I'll sort of apologize in advance for the first question because it might be kind of an HR question for the superintendent. So obviously, we have these new positions that we have identified that could bring value to the district. I know that anecdotally, right now, folks who work in mental health and behavioral health are very much in high demand. How confident are we of our ability to fill these roles if they were to be funded?
Well.
We like to live in the land of rosy glasses, so I like to be confident.
Hopeful. We are very hopeful, and we are going to have a new HR manager that's going to support Barb in our efforts for recruitment. We do feel as though Shrewsbury is a wonderful district to work in, and we are doing everything possible to get the word out there. So as soon as we have that green light, we hope to post and move forward with securing the positions in the district. But other than, we do understand there's a hiring situation. We've lived it all this year, as you know, in a number of positions around what it looks like as far as candidates, but we are staying hopeful.
Thank you. Another, if I might, accessing services for our mental health needs outside of the district, obviously, in spite of all the great work that our team does, we're primarily a school district, not primarily a healthcare provider. Question about students who may need outside supports, but it does not rise to the level of emergency. You know, there's a student, they're not safe, it's an emergency situation. What to do in that situation is obvious. What are some of the barriers, though, to students who might not be at the level of emergency but clearly need a level of support that we can't provide at the staff level? What are some of the barriers beyond waiting lists that you're seeing to students and families accessing these services? What are some of the strategies that we follow to help get folks connected to these outside services where they might need something that just we're not, as Shrewsbury Public Schools, able to provide ourselves?
Go ahead.
So I think that, you know, some of the barriers, the biggest barrier is availability, lack of availability of providers. Another barrier is what Lindsay just mentioned is that it's complicated, and trying to navigate that can be difficult. So both the counselors in the buildings and the school nurses, and certainly if we were able to hire a social worker, can help families try to navigate that. The interface network has been helpful. They've been overwhelmed at times as well this year. So we're all just trying to kind of do as much as we can with knowing that there are the limitations and support, provide support in school as much as we can while people are waiting for those services. But unfortunately, there are barriers out there that just take time and patience to work through. And getting your name on waiting lists is important, multiple waiting lists sometimes just to see who you can get an appointment with first. So just kind of helping parents to advocate. We've certainly, you know, seen families who, it's difficult, and some families are more savvy than others. So we do try to jump in and help families who will accept that help to try to navigate the system.
Thank you. Ms. Fritz.
You know, I think what we're seeing, it's at a national and a local level. In my day job, we're seeing it with adults heightened. So, you know, families are in crisis, the parents, our caregivers, the children, and there isn't enough of the services to go around. So it's really difficult to provide that. But I know this multi-tiered system isn't a reaction from our district to what's happening now. We had it in place. So I think we're in a good spot. And as a school committee, you know, we support these additional positions. And I think it's really important for that Tier One, if we can be proactive versus reactive as best as we can at all levels to maybe stop some of the Tier Two and Tier Three issues in that crisis response. So I'm really glad we had that. Thank you to all of you in place to help deal with it, even though it's a big, very big issue right now, just all over the place. And I think, you know, I'm not sure if any of you watched, hopefully you weren't watching on Saturday morning, but our budget hearing with the finance committee, there was positive comments and support for those positions in recognition that this is an issue in our schools, and they were happy to see that we were adding where it's really needed right now. So thank you.
Thanks.
Dr. Miedea.
Yeah, I'd like to just draw our attention back to the circles that involve family and community there as well. I think one of the things that worries me a lot about your report, as I recall, there was a table in there that had students who were in need of outside mental health services and couldn't get it, and that was a very big number. And it goes beyond our duty to do these things. It is not something we can offer in the district, but we're probably in a better position to advocate for those students than their families are, that they are themselves. And somebody needs to sort of push even harder than is being pushed right now and draw attention to those facts. I think one has to do with just getting more mental health services, which for many of the managed care companies are carve-outs. The managed care company will contract with separate organizations to provide those services. And I think making the managed care companies aware of this capacity or access issue is pretty important. In Massachusetts, probably 90% of the commercial insurance is to companies that are in-state. And so my sense is it wouldn't be an impossible thing to try to put together a little meeting and draw their attention and perhaps draw on a few other districts. The other piece has to do with assisting parents in dealing with these adolescents who are so difficult on a good day. And very often, it's going to be very difficult for them to sort out what's normal and what isn't normal with these adolescents who are advancing through school. And so it's hard for them to know how to communicate. It's hard for them to know how to recognize a critical sign versus a bad day. And I don't know if there's any way for us to run, you know, classes on raising your adolescent or care and feeding of your adolescent, but maybe there's a place for that sort of thing as well, to try to reinforce those important connections outside of the district that you mentioned.
Great. Thank you for the report. Definitely supportive of the recommended investments in the space. I think it's definitely needed, and I know hiring is a challenge. It's good to remain positive, but hiring is a challenge in the industry, really. So, you know, I also appreciate, Meg, your call to action. I think it's important to communicate the supports that are available to families. I don't think you can over-communicate in this space truly. And I actually was encouraged to see the level of engagement received from residents at yesterday's Zoom with the, sorry, Riverside Trauma Center, sorry. But I think 400 attendees, I think, is outstanding to have that in one Zoom call. I think it was great. And certainly, the needs of our district have changed dramatically in the last two years. I think the data shows that, and obviously, we need to add support in this area. And I'm thankful that we're able to potentially do that, you know, with what's happened over the last year in terms of our financial situation. So thank you for the report. Dr. Swer, any further comments?
Thank you. I want to thank Meg and Noel for the report. First off, them and their team did the work that's been happening to try to address this along with all the other members of the leadership team, and, you know, particularly those working directly with students, our counselors, our psychologists, our clinical coordinators. You know, it's been an overwhelming task this year, and, you know, we continue to try to seek ways that we can support them in various ways. Even all of our staff, we're offering webinars, support seminars, a variety of things to try to address the challenges that we know educators, particularly those working in the mental health space, are coping with this year. I just want to reiterate what was said earlier, that seeking help is a sign of strength. We are trying, we've done work, and we have to continue to try to work to remove the stigma of the idea that mental health is something that you don't talk about or something that is something to be ashamed of. It is something that every family is touched by in some way, shape, or form during their lifetimes. And right now, we have just too many young people, and there's a whole variety of things. And I'm sure there'll be lots of research that will be coming on in coming years and around how this affected young people. To me, some of that doesn't matter so much what the cause is. It's, you know, what is it that we can do to try to build that resilience, as you spoke about earlier, the mindfulness piece? And how is it that we can provide support, that sense of belonging, that sense of hope that we know there's a lot of protective things? One of the things when we met with Mr. McCauley from the Riverside Trauma Center a week or two ago, when we raised, you know, our concerns were raised even higher than they had been, is that he reminded us that school is a huge protective factor for young people. And just by virtue of being in school, and some kids are struggling getting to school because of the things they're struggling with, and that's something that we are trying to work with families on. But our schools are healthy, positive, safe places for kids, and it's something that I'm proud of the work that we are doing as a school district. We are looking to do even better. And I think some of the budgetary resources, which you'll hear about in a moment in terms of the budget report, that we hope to bring onboard for next year will help us build that capacity, not only to respond to this ongoing crisis, but as this crisis hopefully abates over the coming months, and although this is long-lasting, we don't expect this to, you know, hopefully the intensity starts to abate, but we're really going to be seeing the impact of this for a long time. But, you know, the more we can start to shift gears into being proactive, we want to do that, of course, but we also need to respond to what we're experiencing and our students are experiencing. We're worried about our kids. And so collectively, everyone watching, whether you're a community member, a parent, an educator, we just need to make sure we're working together in the best interest of supporting and keeping our kids as safe as possible. So thanks to the work these professionals are doing, and we'll continue to keep the school committee updated on the work we're doing and what we're experiencing as far as students' mental health.
Thank you so much. Okay. The next item on our agenda is also a time-scheduled appointment. It is a report on the Special Education Fiscal Year 2023 Budget. Annually, the leadership of the Special Education and Pupil Personnel Services provides information regarding programming for students who are eligible for special education or other student services and review key budget information projected for the following year. Ms. Belcito and Ms. Bartlett are here with us today to present the report. Welcome back.
Thank you.
It's been a while.
So it should be noted that our last budget report, formal budget report, was shared with the committee in February of 2020, one month prior to the closure of our schools. And our Student Services Department includes our dedicated medical professionals. Our nurses absolutely have to be celebrated and thanked countlessly as they worked through the health pandemic, helped us all navigate the health and safety standards during closure, designing our reopening plans, and now once again, being the frontline workers through our mental health crisis that has emerged on the other side of the pandemic. So while this year is seeing so many challenges that you continue to hear about, we have found some bright spots of opportunity for our students and staff to continue the mission of our department. Based on the information we just shared about the mental health, a subcommittee was established at the beginning of this school year to select and design an implementation plan for a universal mental health screener. This, like the STAR assessment, will be used as a baseline for our students' mental health and to identify those who require any kind of intervention. We can now say that we have co-teaching across all grade levels, pre-K through 12. Pictured here, you can see our preschool teachers, related service providers, and paraprofessionals working with Donna Simone on the practices of effective co-teaching, explicit instruction, and the importance of specially-designed instruction. Also this year, we have some specialized professional development at our preschool. They've been working with the Collaborative for Educational Services on culturally responsive teaching, social emotional learning, and family engagement.
And our K through six educators are participating in PD related to the science of reading and effective interventions by the company Crafting Minds. Educators in grades seven through 12 also participated in PD. This was related to effective transition planning and how to include student voice. Our clinical department accessed webinars through Mass Youth Partnership. This is a resource about mental and behavioral health. Our physical and occupational therapists were also enrolled in field-specific coursework. And finally, our speech pathologists and intensive educators received additional training related to assistive technology with Cottin Consulting. As Lindsay shared earlier, we're thrilled to talk about our Unified Programs. Our Unified Champion Schools are accomplished by implementing inclusive sports, inclusive youth leadership opportunities, and whole-school engagement. The program is designed to be woven into the fabric of the school, enhancing current efforts and providing rich opportunities that lead to meaningful change in creating a socially-inclusive school and supporting and engaging all learners. SHS was recognized as a nationally-unified champion school in November 2019. Our Young Athletes Program at Parker Road Preschool has allowed preschool to also be a recipient of becoming a unified champion school. Sherwood and Oak achieved this status in June of 2020. Currently, a middle school Unified Basketball Team has been formed and played their first-ever games this past month after inauguration- after our inaugural season was interrupted due to the pandemic. As a result of that work, we also have a new Unified Booster Club at our middle school levels to support the team and their peers. As we've mentioned before, we continue, we started this year, our initial work on creating a community-based instructional opportunities for our students for entitlement services ages eighteen to twenty-two. There, we'll learn, we'll work on functional academics, independent living schools, and vocational opportunities and to become as independent within the Shrewsbury community. And finally, we, like many job fields, have felt the effect of the hiring crisis. Due to ongoing staffing needs this year, the Special Education Leadership Team has interviewed over one hundred ABA technicians and child-specific aides. And we continue to staff the Special Education aides to support the identified needs for students receiving inclusion services. While it's not uncommon for us to interview all school year because of ongoing student needs, the volume has been truly extraordinary.
So, within the Student Services, we support students both on Section 504 Accommodation Plans and those that qualify for Special Education Services. In comparing our numbers from 2018 to 2022, you obviously can see there's an increase of students qualifying for both 504 Accommodation Plans and for Special Education. The increase is due to the larger number of referrals, students moving into our district, students moving from 504 Plans to IEPs, students with both Individual Education Plans and 504s, our continued child find activities, and the impact of the school closure and the health pandemic.
As you can see, the majority of our Shrewsbury students receive Special Education Services are fully included in learning for the majority of the day alongside their peers. This continues to celebrate our strategic priority of designing learning environments where everyone's success matters while maintaining high learning expectations for all learners. Our mission correlates to educating students within the least restrictive environment. General education in a full-inclusion program should always be the first instructional placement of a child. Seventy-seven percent of our students are receiving their specially-designed instruction within full-inclusion programs.
Like all students with special needs, the team must always consider the less restrictive setting first. However, for some students, that requires that we look at placements outside of the public school. We currently have students attending multiple types of schools. The least restrictive would be considered, on this slide, the least restrictive would be considered sub-separate. This term refers to students that have access to their peers. Some of these students are accessing a collaborative program that is located within a public middle school and high school. The students have access to the general education peers as well as accessing school activities and clubs. In addition, you know, Shrewsbury Public Schools does not currently have an eighteen-to-twenty-two program. These students are also considered sub-separate placement because they have access to their adult peers in vocation and community-based learning opportunities. The program type public and collaborative programs that are not located within a public school building. Then we have our private day and residential programming. As you can see, the greatest expenditure for our private day placements, this is currently budgeted at twenty-eight students. And here is a picture of Joshua. Josh graduated this school year from Kennedy Day School, and it was one of the happiest graduations we've ever attended. He just smiled from ear to ear. COVID-19 has also had impact on the add district budget for this current fiscal year. Over this year, we have had over fourteen students leave their add district placements for a variety of reasons. Five had left, who had entered into entitlement services, accepted their diplomas, and proceeded on to their post-secondary areas of interest. Five students moved downtown, and four students moved to less restrictive placements, thus indicating a difference between the fiscal years. However, with that being said, we continue to currently have students being recommended for added district placements. Shrewsbury currently has seven active referrals issued for placements that range from residential level of care to substantially separate placement based upon the individual needs of the students. In addition, there are multiple teams across grade levels that continue to monitor if Shrewsbury Public Schools is the least restrictive setting and if we need to seek alternative placements.
We currently contract specialists in the following areas to support our low-incidence disabilities and mandated services. Things like psychiatry, orientation and mobility, teacher of the visually impaired, vision specialist, behavior, speech and language, teacher of the deaf, home-based services, teacher of the deaf-blind, audiological services, and assistive technology. In addition, as you can see, we also have contracted services related to our consultation of our Special Education Council, translations and interpretation services, tutoring for medically-compromised students, psychological consultation, and evaluation services. Tiered focus monitoring. So, like you, Lindsay, mentioning before about terms that people are like, what is this about? So, tiered focus monitoring is from the Department of Education's Office of Public School Monitoring, and it's conducted through what they now call, or formally called, our Coordinated Program Review. It's now called Tiered Focus Monitoring Review. They come every three years, and we had the pleasure of their visit in December. Public School Monitoring visits each district and charter school to review areas related to special education. And this includes, for us this year, student assessments, determination of eligibility, IEP team process, and the IEP development and implementation. Areas related to civil rights include bullying, student discipline, physical restraint, and equal access to school programs for all students. In addition to their onsite visit in December, the review chairperson from Public School Monitoring sent all students of parents with disabilities an online survey that focuses on key areas of their child's special education program. During the onsite review, they also interviewed the chairperson of our CPAC, or our Special Education Parent Advisory Council. Other activities included interviews of district staff and administrators, review of student records, and onsite observations. We will share the final report and look forward to doing that in the near future.
Can't not help but smile when you look at that little preschooler. In addition to the recommended investments listed in the mental health report, we're looking to enhance other aspects of Student Services Department. We would like to restore one preschool teacher and one preschool aide position lost to the budget cuts in the previous year at a moderate special education teacher at Shrewsbury High School to address the growing caseloads and to increase an FTE at the elementary level of a speech and language pathologist to include additional supports. And now the fun.
So, let me just switch over. And before I hit play...
Yep.
We wanted to end this presentation with one of the highlights of our school year. Our coaches, Jason Ponticelli and Courtney Delaney, along with other staff volunteers, put together a home game for our middle school Unified Basketball Team. I'm not sure how they accomplished what they accomplished, but this home game was nothing short of phenomenal and something clearly, like, right out of a movie. Channel five came, and would like you to see the clip if you haven't seen it already, or those at home that haven't seen the clip, for them to see it. It was an uplifting event that had the impact not only on our Shrewsbury students and families, but also our counterparts in Auburn. We had so many partners that wanted to participate in this athletic event that a Unified Booster Club was created, that Meg mentioned earlier, to support the athletes and to promote an inclusive team spirit. We had cheerleaders present. We had fans in every corner of the Oak Middle School gym. There were signs held by families, students. I could go on and on.
There was a halftime show.
Oh, there was a halftime show, yes, exactly.
United Basketball League was supposed to tip off back in March of 2020, but then was canceled due to the start of the pandemic, and now it's making an emotional return.
Number fifty-four, Luke Martin.
The pre-game pomp and circumstance...
It really makes them feel like they belong. It's just beautiful to see all of the support.
...to a crowd atmosphere rivaling the Garden.
Pretty crazy here. I was not expecting any of this.
Basketball game between Auburn and Shrewsbury Middle Schools, leaving parents speechless.
It brings tears to my eyes just thinking about it.
It really brought a tear to my eye, you know what I mean?
That's because many of the players on both sides have developmental disabilities. Teammates supporting each other and their peers in the crowd making kids like Ryan Hurley and his dad Shane feel at home.
People help you and support you, and it makes you feel real good.
He comes home now with a little pep in his step. You know, he's going through the hallways of school, getting high fives. And, you know, it's just, it's something I've never seen before.
Never thought I would see the day that he would be playing on an organized sports team.
This program was supposed to start in March of 2020.
Have Jaden go on to do the jump ball, okay?
But Shrewsbury coach Jason Ponticelli worked to bring it back.
Being able to provide these opportunities for those kids and get them as part of a team is absolutely a dream come true.
A dream come true no one knew, will forget. Some really, some really cool moments here today for those kids. And right now, only Auburn and Shrewsbury are the only two towns that have, that are a part of this league. And those parents here and the coach hoping that other school districts see this story and bring on their own teams as well.
Does it not make you smile?
Plus a three-point shot.
Jaden had multiple three-point shots in the first game, and he came out in the second game.
Scored six in the first game. It was unbelievable.
And then he came out in the next game. Yeah, it was just awesome. I was like, he's got to get another one, and he did it. So, it was great.
So, we want to thank you for your time today. And we're happy to answer any questions. But before we do so, we just want to highlight some of our students that are up there on the, on the screen. In the left-hand corner, you see our district's physical therapist, Dr. Brittany Zaleski, at our Young Athletes Celebration that occurred in the spring. Without her, this would not have been able to occur. She created all the curriculum that the preschool teachers were able to implement. Then we have a co-teaching class over at Floral Street. This is Ms. Merrill and Ms. Robbins' class. What they're doing is a whole class movement break to get their bodies ready to learn. Then we have Ms. Dowling's class. This is over at Parker Road, and we are doing dramatic play. And then in the bottom left-hand corner, that's Ms. Wallace's classroom. They're doing functional life skills and academics. In that center there, that's one of our occupational therapists, Ms. McGordy. She's providing in-class visual and fine motor supports. That is our unified cheerleader Dee, rocking it out, bringing school spirit. And then at the bottom, you see some of our friends having snack time at the Beal Neighborhood Hallway. We are so pleased to continue to make a positive impact for both students with and without special needs. We thank you for the opportunity and to highlight the quality of work that's truly happening in our departments and in every corner of this district. And again, we're happy to answer any questions.
Thanks so much for the report. Colleagues, questions, comments? Ms. Fritz?
Not a question, but a huge thank you to both of you and all of your staff. I mean, this work can be very complex. Paperwork is huge, but the rewards are immense, you know, for families, for students. So, I think pre-COVID, it was a lot of work. But I know during COVID, especially in the beginning, as we went through that first summer, the amount of work that our sped professionals did was immense and the amount of time that you put in. And I think that has to be noted for our community.
Thank you.
So, great work. And, you know, seeing, you know, this basketball game. John sends me a text, "It's going to be on Channel five soon." I'm running. It's just like, these are the things that we should be proud of as a community. But huge thank you to all of you and everything that you've done.
Thank you.
For the comments, questions? Ms. Everon?
Yeah, I'm certainly really supportive of and excited that we are in a place in the budget where those things that you are asking for that seem reasonable and appropriate are things that we can do. And that hasn't always been the position that we've been in. And I would certainly echo all of the accolades that run around that are very appropriate, that your team really deserves because the effort has been certainly Herculean. I wonder if, on one of your very first, first of your second sets of slides, I guess, is a note about mental health screeners. And I know early on in this school year, it was one of the things that we had talked about as being an important investment for us to be making. Can you just give us a little sense of a timeline of when, when have we decided on a screener? I know there was a formation of a committee to look at all the different options. And so where, where are we in that, in that process? And what, if any, budgetary implications might there be to make some of those investments?
So, they're in the final stages of picking the universal mental health screener. They have looked at a number of them and would like to make a recommendation. I believe they were meeting this week, if I recall correctly. What, Dr. Gitter and Rebecca Cannol were the leads for the adjustment counselor and psychologist group. And as far as funding goes, our plan right now is to use some of the funding from the disproportionality out of our 240 grant. So, if you remember that conversation, how we have a certain amount of funds from our IDEA grant that we have to set aside, and we should be able to fund the universal mental health screener through that source.
Great. I think it might, the one thing you may see, as we'll select the universal screener, we want to make sure that we have an implementation plan. So, that's, if we do a screener, we want to make sure all of our clinical staff are available to respond if, as, to whatever the screener has. So, I think that might be, that's going to be our next step.
Okay. Thank you very much for the update.
Yeah, thank you for the report. This is amazing how far this program has come in a short amount of time, I think. I just think about, you know, the co-teaching model that we've talked about, now having forty teams across all grade levels. I think it's just, it's just awesome. And, I mean, the Unified Program speaks for itself in terms of what you showed for the event last week. But I know there are other events like that that we've had in previous years prior to COVID. And my son was part of the pep band at one of those big events at the high school. And it just, it's such a great atmosphere, really positive, and just such a morale boost. And it's great to see how many students get involved in that program, not just sports, too. I know there's Unified Music and other, other club programs. I think they're excellent, really good, good work. So, thank you so much, Dr. S...
Speaking of the Unified Music, they will be performing...
At the end of April, soon.
At the end of April, at the, at the last, the last concert.
Yeah, looking forward to it. That's great. Awesome. Dr. Sawyer, further comments?
This is, you know, outstanding work that's happening to benefit, you know, students who have really significant challenges and some, you know, that are relatively less, but important to address, and some who have really profound challenges. And I think that the work of special educators and paraprofessionals who support children with special needs is among the most difficult work that's being done anywhere in any sector in our nation right now. And I think that they deserve to be commended. I think that the work that the leadership team in the Special Education Student Services Department has been outstanding. The amount of work behind the scenes that neither parents nor staff see that is moving towards supporting. And when I think of where we were when it comes to inclusion, when Ms. Belcito was hired a number of years ago, we have come miles in terms of fully including our students, whether that's in the educational program, whether that's things like Unified Athletics and Unified Sound and the rest. We are very fortunate that she has helped us in a very meaningful way move the needle on making sure that acceptance and inclusivity is really, that we're delivering on that promise. It's part of our core values. So, I appreciate it. It certainly, they are very thoughtful, both Ms. Bartlett and Ms. Belcito, about being cost-effective. There are a whole variety of different funding sources, as you know, that we have to keep track of. It'd be very purposeful, that are very rule-bound in terms of what we can use certain funds for and what we can't. And their advocacy for what ultimately I'll be recommending to you on the thirteenth will be based on what's already there, very heavily focused on meeting the mental health needs and the special education needs of our students. And when that happens, that benefits everybody. Inclusivity and making sure that all kids feel a part of their school community and their community at large here in Shrewsbury, that benefits everyone. So, I'm very proud of the work that's being done by all of our special educators, support staff, and the Special Education Leadership Team. And I deeply appreciate the work that you're doing. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Okay. The next item on our agenda is a time-scheduled appointment. It is a report and recommendations on the Extended School Care Program. The Office of Extended Learning oversees the Extended School Care Program and other programs designed to enrich students hours beyond the traditional school day. Ms. Karen Isaacson, Director of Extended Learning, will present a report on the fiscal status of the program and make recommendations regarding FY23 tuition and wage rates in advance of a vote by the committee on April thirteenth. And I'd like to welcome Ms. Isaacson.
Thank you. I'm delighted to be back in my capacity as the Director of Extended Learning while Ms. Belcito types in my password.
Fingers crossed.
Right, right. I mean, I think, as you know, we were, all of my programs were closed... I mean, I think, as you know, we were, all of my programs were closed last year, largely due to the hybrid model, that we just could not sustain enough enrollment or finances. So the joy of being able to reopen was, was just tremendous. You know, when I was last here, we, we furloughed 70 staff, and then a great deal of them ended up taking a layoff position. And to come back in September, 50 of those folks returned. And a lot of the people who didn't were, they moved out of state, they moved closer to their grandchildren. I mean, a lot of personal reasons. It wasn't so much the, "I had to go find another job because you laid me off." It kind of worked to our benefit because our enrollment is also down about 20% from pre-pandemic levels. And for the first time in my career here, we have zero waitlist at Extended Day. So a pretty big shift in the number of students we're serving this year. So the fact that some of our staff did not return really kind of worked to my benefit that I did not have to exclude anyone from getting their job back who wanted to come back. I really want to credit the leadership team, the site coordinators in particular. They all accepted other positions in the district last year at, you know, a lower rate of pay, and they all resumed their responsibilities. And we could not have restarted the school year as strong without those core folks, and I'm just very grateful. We're almost there.
Almost.
There we go. Thanks, Pat. Great. The, as enrollment was dropping this year, I have a bar chart kind of showing this. I also want to express my gratitude, the flexibility of our staff, that I've had staff willingly say, "I'll, I'll give up a day of the week so someone doesn't have to lose their job. I'll shift my responsibilities to providing one-on-one support to a student so that someone doesn't have to lose their job." We have made some sacrifices this year, and they've really rallied to support each other largely. So that, when you look at our, we started this year with 550 kids, I think because a lot of companies were saying, "He'll be back in the office in September. He'll be back in the office in October." And, you know, and so you kind of really saw this big dip down to January, we were closer to 500 students. And now, you know, there's been a steady uptick through April. The drop-off for May and June is really typical. Mostly older students, sixth graders in particular, have, they're ready, you know? They're ready to have some independence. The spring sports start up. The fact that this dip is not even greater is the fact that I'm taking new enrollments for this current school year. I mean, just, we started five students this week in Extended Day, as parents really are truly going back to the office. So that's really giving me a good feeling for what next year's enrollment could be. I want to speak a little bit to, you know, tying into some of tonight's other reports. We've certainly seen some of these same challenges that students, students are experiencing. But watching those kids be able to come back after such a long time of social isolation and caution, and just to be able to play, and watching their joy in playing, and their joy in the simpler activities. They don't need complicated activities for us to play in. They want to be outside. They want to play with each other. Watching them rebuild these social skills has, has really been beautiful, and their staff has really facilitated that. Things we were surprised by, like kids, they forgot how to play bingo. They didn't remember the rules to just your average kickball game. I mean, you know, it seems small, but it was really this impact of what happens when you lose a big chunk of your opportunity to play with peers. We've definitely seen some of the more challenging behavioral challenges of, of my career. I'm really grateful to this larger community, the support of school psychologists and adjustment counselors. I mean, I had a Zoom with one of the clinical coordinators. There were really a lot of partnership that we are all serving the same students, and it's critical that they be able to succeed. That those ties to community, a lot of students tell us this is their favorite part of the day, and they want to be here. And it's motivating to get out of bed and go to school because I know I get to go to Extended Day at the end of the day. So to really bridge, bridge those ties between the school day and after-school, I am so thankful this community is so supportive of our work and really happy, in, in a year where their caseloads are so high, are still carving out time to meet with my after-school staff to say, "How can we support these students?" Because it, it feels like behaviors that maybe have been harder to accommodate in the past feel really critical to me that we provide the resources for these kids to stay in the program. That while Extended Day is not a, it's not a right, I mean, it's not a mandated program, the ability for them to rebuild their social skills in a safe and fun and inclusive environment is critical. And so we've certainly had more staffing resources this year put toward kids who need behavioral, emotional, and learning supports after-school. So I'm gonna go here, just from a policy point of view, because part of this discussion is budget as well. Changes that were put, finally put into place this year that we had discussed two years ago, we limited parents to three enrollment options. They, they used to be able to pick whatever schedule they wanted, and that led to some financial and staff planning challenges. So they now can choose five days, Tuesday, Thursday only, or Monday, Wednesday, Friday only. And some families have struggled with that. It's not as family-friendly or flexible as, as I like to be. But you know, if I, if I jump to this slide, this was kind of the real-life example. Say, the Coolidge enrollment in 2019, you can see just the variations day-to-day. This was considered a full program. I couldn't take anyone off the waitlist because really the only place I had an opening was Friday. So the annual revenue for that was $2,000, $200,004, whereas if you picked one of those spots and one of those spots only, and I had, you know, consistent enrollment, that's an extra $10,000 in revenue just from that site. I have six buildings. We were really struggling for our revenue to cover our costs. And this is one way that really helps significantly. I think our financial situation for the current year would have been much more challenging had we not put this in place. A few other minor changes. We used to charge $25 per early-release day in the month that it happened. And it was, you know, kind of a billing nightmare, and a lot of parents, "Why am I paying this? And he didn't come." And this year, we just said, you know, "We're rolling it into the cost of tuition." So it is 125 extra dollars to, to defray the cost. It doesn't even fully cover, but staff are working three additional hours. We're providing lunch. We're providing special programs. So I bring this up because when we look at rate comparisons over the years, it's not quite apples-to-apples because we rolled this into, anyone who comes five days a week, or Tuesday, Thursday, it's just spread across the 10-month payments. I mean, it's another small change, but we are now collecting tuition a whole 30 days in advance. So we took our first revenue in, in August. Really helped with planning, really helped with giving us this buffer as the numbers fluctuated, knowing that I had kind of had this in the bank ahead of time. And for the first time this year, we are requiring families, the last possible day to make changes to their schedule for the rest of this year is April 1st. And that's helping with that May and June drop-off piece and helping me plan. Like, if I'm, I'm losing a staff person, do I need to replace that staff person for the last two months of the year or not? Things like that. It just kind of helps the forecast. So while I lose some of that flexibility that working families need, I think it's really helped keep the program robust. Because as you all know, we, we, you know, this is not a profit-generating program, and we really rely on parent fees to cover our costs. So if I go to, is a snapshot of both, you know, pre-pandemic enrollment, our current enrollment, and our projected enrollment. We really dropped, you know, our, our after-school enrollment went from 463 pre-pandemic to 372 right now. It was, you know, a pretty big drop. And it's not also an apples-to-apples comparison. We increased our capacity by 100 kids when we opened the new Beal. So we, you know, we had a 200-person waiting list and 460 kids. And then we went down to 372 with no waiting list. It really could have been a much higher enrollment. Just based on like current trends right now, the number of inquiries of, I'm getting, the families who have renewed for next year, who are increasing their days. I mean, I had a family tell me this week that they, their daughter is coming two days a week this year, and they're coming five next year, not because they need the childcare, but because their child loves it so much. And it's benefiting her socially. So I, I think we're seeing a little bit of uptick, too, as even the parents' works are still a little uncertain. There's still people working from home. And this is really, this drop in enrollment is really attributed to that, that people don't need as much childcare when they're working from home. There were very few people saying, "I'm nervous about the health conditions." It was mostly being, "I just, I just don't need it." So as people are returning, you know, I have seen this very recent uptick, you know, just these past few weeks, a lot of phone calls, "Do you have a spot for the rest of the year? I'm going back to work." And then I am now actively enrolling people for next year. You know, because we have no waitlist, I have spots in every school for next year. There's an announcement going out in the community bulletin. The website is active with all the instructions on how to register. And I think that our, you know, our forecasted enrollment, I'm projecting will be about where we were when we closed, which is not at full capacity because our capacity is bigger, and we probably won't have a waitlist. I will be pleasantly surprised if I'm wrong, but I think even, I, I don't think we'll probably be a lot lower than this just based on where I already am at this point in the registration process. So when we dive into next year's budget slide, what you're gonna be seeing, the numbers I'm projecting are based on an increased number of staff because enrollment is going up, a wage increase of 2.25%, which is in line with what the paraprofessionals are getting, anticipated increase in health insurance, plus a few new enrollments as positions moved from more part-time to full-time. It's assuming the same level of student one-to-one support. That's a really unpredictable thing, year-to-year. There, there may be more, there may be less. I'd say estimating right now about $100,000 of my salary budget goes toward people who are supporting students in direct one-to-one positions. And then the level of reduced fee subsidy, this year went up to almost 13%. I, I think one of the side effects of the pandemic is that people who have the flexibility to work from home versus people who are required to work in person. And a lot of those in-person jobs tend to be service industry jobs, which do not pay as well. And so the ability to provide childcare for all of our families is a beautiful and wonderful thing. And there's a lot of families who would not be able to do their jobs without this financial support. It just, there's a disproportion when we have fewer overall families, you know, the percentage of folks who need support. So I think we'll kind of go back to that 10%-ish level of serving families. So just a quick look at the numbers for next year. You know, a, a very small positive financial forecast. And, you know, it's a pretty thin margin. It's something I will always be watching closely. All it would take is two or three students per site not coming. That wouldn't be enough to adjust my staffing if it's only two or three kids at this one site. But across six sites, I've suddenly lost $50,000 in revenue. So it's, it's a moving target. We watch it closely. This year, we gave up a lot of special activities. We, partly because of the pandemic, we weren't taking field trips, and partly just as an eye toward costs. And as I said earlier, our students are just so happy to be back and playing and simple crafts and board games. They're thrilled by, we'd like to build in some more of our fun, special things. There's some flexibility there. A little perspective on our rate history, I'd just like to keep that. This is where that early-release day fee shows up. Like, if you look at 2020, when the fee was $286 per month, it looks like a big jump to a current proposed $344, but part of that is just that $125. We have seen just slow incremental increases each year, rather than that great big 15% jump that happened back in 2013. That's something we've tried to avoid, just by having, just enough to cover our expenses. As always, our rates are so much lower than similar programs in the community. The full report I gave you had over 30 schools, but these are just some, you know, really comparable programs, both private and public school, and you see we're just coming in almost at rock bottom. So still a very, very affordable program, even with a 5% rate increase. So, you know, just quick in summary, we've just rebuilt a, a robust and thriving program thanks to the core dedicated staff who've come back and their strong leadership. As we see the public health trends getting better, higher vaccination, and people going back to work, I am confident that our enrollment is going back up. And I'm recommending a 2.25% wage increase and a 5% tuition increase. And I will leave you with this delightful photo of our Coolidge students this fall gathered up all the loose leaves to spell out ESC. And this was one of those live photos that on my phone, if I pressed it, they're jumping up and down. And it just captured the joy of, of being back together. So questions from you.
Thank you so much. Colleagues, questions, comments? Ms. Fritz?
Just a comment. Thank you again for everything that you do. I know you filled in when we didn't. I mean, you've done a lot for us, so thank you for that. And, and this is a lifeline program. I know myself, as a working parent, it was the best thing that my kids had, and it was safe, and it was affordable. And I think these smaller increments are what we should do. It makes it much easier for families to budget and balance. And I think we were thinking a little ahead of time when we talked about changing to the three options. Because we're seeing a lot of flex schedules as people go back to work. Companies aren't making a lot of people come back five full days. So have, I think having that in there is a good thing. Because you may have a lot of the three-two, two-three type of days for families. So I think we're on the right path, but thank you. It's, it's a wonderful program.
Ms. Palich?
A brief comment to echo what Mrs. Fritz said. I'm, I'm really pleased that we have this program back. I know it's a lifeline for families, and I appreciate you connecting it to the previous topic of mental health because in addition to hours of supervision and care, it is an additional connection between students and their peers and students in the school community. So thank you.
Ms. Everin?
Yeah, I just, I just want to echo my, my, my joy that you have as many openings as you do. And, because I was one of those parents who always was on the wrong end of the lottery and was in a place where the year of the pandemic hitting was paying for a kid to be an extended day that I didn't need an extended day so that my next kid could get in. So there's a whole gaming of the system that was going on of like, "But in the other building, because then the sibling has..." All of that. It was craziness. And I was not alone. I know I was, I was well-advised. But, but the idea that we now have the opportunity for any parent who needs it to get into a program that I think is, is, is exceptionally want-run and a great value is just a really great place to be. And I know that's because of capacity and Beal and, and other things going on. But I, I am, like you, feeling confident that come the fall, it will, it will look and feel like numbers that we're sort of a little more used to. And as, as we all start to kind of get back into some more normalized routines. So thanks for running a great program.
Thank you for the report. It's great to see you in person again.
Absolutely.
Yes, this program remains such a tremendous value to the, the community, even, even at the proposed rate increase. You know, very competitive, actually among the lowest that, you know, you showed in terms of area programs. I think obviously rebuilding social skills are so critical right now, and, and any way we can open up opportunities for families, I think, is important. I agree with you, too, around the unpredictability of those numbers. I know many companies, including my own, that are prepping some form of return to office. You know, maybe a couple of days a week, but it's gonna vary by month, so it's something, something to watch out for. And also, as, as Ms. Fritz said, I would like to thank you personally for the work that you, you did for COVID operations. I know Patrick was always keeping us updated and would constantly mention your name as, as a really key contributor to that. So thank you so much for all the work that you put into that and keeping our students and staff safe. So thank you so much. Dr. Swer, further comments?
Appreciate very much the quality of the program. I had the opportunity to use it as a parent for many years. It, it is a huge benefit to being part of the Shrewsbury Public Schools as a family. And the, the quality of what ESC provides is outstanding. And I'll echo all the comments about Ms. Isaacson, leadership of the program, and she's very savvy about how to approach it. I know that she'll be reaching out to families with this information in the, between now and the 13th. Any feedback we get, we'll certainly let the school committee know. I'll make a recommendation at that time, although I, you know, it seems to make sense to me in terms of what's being recommended in terms of the tuition increase and the increase for staff compensation. But again, thank you to Ms. Isaacson for all the work and to your staff, and we're very, very glad to have the program back online.
Me, too. Thank you all very much.
Great. Thanks so much. Okay, the next item on our agenda is under Curriculum. It is an educational programming to be supported by Student Opportunity Act funds. That'll be required for a committee vote. The Student Opportunity Act state legislation is tied to the Chapter 70 program. And any increases in Chapter 70 funds must be aligned with certain requirements in the law, including state educational priorities and accountability measures. Every district now is required to submit a plan for how these funds will be expended. And the enclosed memo from Ms. Clowder outlines that. So here to present is Ms. Amy Clowder.
Thank you. This will probably be the shortest presentation I ever give at school committee, in part because it's familiar and also because it's kind of pro forma. As you know, the Chapter 70 program is the major source of state funding to public elementary and secondary schools. And based on the current state formula, Shrewsbury's Chapter 70 funding has only... And based on the current state formula, Shrewsbury's Chapter 70 funding has only increased by minimum aid. I know you've heard Mr. Collins say that many times. So that will likely be the case again in FY23. Shrewsbury is slated to receive an additional $30 per student of minimum aid, which would total $180,090. To be clear, this is not a new source of funding, but that we would have otherwise received, but rather a new state requirement. So we have to indicate how we are going to spend the annual small increase in Chapter 70 that we get each year. So the new Student Opportunity Act legislation is tied to Chapter 70. So any increases in Chapter 70 funds have to be aligned with the requirements in the law and also with state educational priorities and accountability measures that come from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. This was originally designed, this alignment, because lots of districts will be receiving substantial funding. Although we will not be one of those districts receiving additional funding, we're still subject to the same requirements that other districts are. So the plan is to ask you to approve the funds that will be expended on two main priorities that are also priorities for our district reflected in our strategic plans. So we want to essentially continue with the universal screening tool that we adopted. This will fund kind of the FY23 portion of that expense and also the reading and math tools that are associated with that screener tool and to continue to provide support for the inclusive special education co-teaching programs that we included in the first iteration of our Student Opportunity Plan. So again, this isn't new funding that we're receiving, but rather a new requirement to explain how we're using a portion of that money. So the state requirement comes with guidance and this is an updated version of the slide that I shared with you way back before the pandemic about what the guidance is on how we're supposed to allocate funds is. Again, the real focus is closing opportunity gaps. And Desi's advice is to commit to a small number of high-impact evidence-based programs that support student subgroups. And Desi was also clear that districts can adopt or deepen or continue evidence-based programs that were already in place that were funded by SOR III. And so for us, that was an invitation to kind of think about the continuity of the universal screener piece. And then finally, as we progressed and kind of met our initial goal, which was to fully fund Full Day K. And, you know, we opened Beal, we did that. So essentially, we're continuing with allocation for co-teaching and then just trading out the Full Day K aspect of our plan with the universal screener. So we're going to allocate $94,159 for advancing co-teaching and the remaining $85,931 to the cost of the universal screener. So another part of the state guidance entails reaching out to the community for feedback. And you'll recall that when we first talked about it, we did much more publication, I think, of the requirements of the law and more soliciting of the community. We used a survey tool then and got, I think, five responses on our first survey. We saw it uptick in our survey responses this year. We got 35 responses. Pretty evenly split between kind of community members and Shrewsbury educators. And overall, there was support for our plan. If anything, it was, we'd like you to spend a little bit more money doing some of these other things. We also got some support for the educators that support students with disabilities and thinking about things like co-planning and also expanding some of the supports for students with disabilities beyond the co-teaching program. So there's a real awareness in the community, both on the part of parents and also educators, for making sure that we're meeting the diverse needs of our students. They also suggested some other ways that we should spend our money, not surprisingly when you ask people, namely, mental health and advancing the cause of diversity and equity. And then people noticed that this plan really specifically supports students mostly K-8. And so they're thinking about, you know, what are some special tools that we can provide in place for students at the high school who may be struggling academically? All good feedback. So we had 17 parents and caregivers, 17 educators and one community member. And again, you know, mostly saying, I really, you know, think this support makes sense. So at this point, I'll take any questions you might have, but really that's about it?
Yeah. Questions, comments? Any further comments, Dr. Sawyer?
No, I appreciate the recommendation and just to reiterate, I appreciate the feedback people gave. I mean, for context, we're talking about meeting the state requirement to say how we're going to spend this $180,000 and some odd dollars of Chapter 70 that we get every year anyways as a minimum aid district. And some of those other pieces people talked about, mental health issues, supporting a variety of things. You know, there's $1.2 million worth of recommendations in our budget of new investments that cover a lot of those kinds of things. So this is a very, very narrowly focused piece that has to do with the requirement under the law. And I do recommend the school committee vote to support the plan as illustrated by Ms. Clowder.
Great. Thank you so much. This does require a committee vote. Therefore, I need a motion that the committee vote to approve the district's plan as presented for expending any increases of Chapter 70 funding received from the state in order to meet the requirements of the Student Opportunity Act.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please do so by saying aye. Aye. And the motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much. All right. Next item on the agenda is under Finance and Operations. It is a public hearing of the fiscal year 2023 budget. The public and members of the school department are invited to provide input to the committee and the administration regarding the FY23 budget. This public hearing meets the requirements of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 71, Section 38N, which requires school districts to provide an opportunity for members of the public to be heard regarding the proposed school district budget. So without any further comments before we open the hearing, Dr. Sawyer?
No, I know that it doesn't seem like we have a lot of folks in attendance, assuming someone here may want to speak and that is fine. I would just remind folks that right very prominently on our webpage, if you click under the departments, I'm sorry, the district page and click on Budget, there's a link to the fiscal year 2023 budget materials that people are welcome to read. And I will be making a final recommendation for the budget to the school committee at your meeting two weeks from this evening. And certainly if people have feedback for the committee and for me, they're welcome to reach out by email between now and then and share anything that is of interest relative to what we should be prioritizing among some of the additional investments that I've initially recommended for consideration or anything else relative to the budget.
Great. Thank you so much. I know we have not received any emails with regards to the budget recommendations since we discussed it a few weeks back. So therefore, I will open the public hearing for the FY23 school budget. If anybody would like to speak, please raise your hand and come to the standing microphone. Anyone? Going once? Going twice? All right. Therefore, I will close the public hearing on the budget for FY23. Thank you very much. And I believe we can move on to the next item on the agenda. Okay, which is also under Finance and Operations. It's the FY23 Fees and Tuition Review and Vote. At the meeting on March 16th, Dr. Sawyer and Mr. Collins presented information for fees related to busing, athletics, student activities and preschool tuition. Dr. Sawyer recommended the elimination of the student activities fees for families for the 2022-23 school year. After careful consideration, feedback from the committee, Dr. Sawyer will present his recommendation tonight. With that, I'll hand it over to Dr. Sawyer.
Thank you. The information was provided to you again two weeks ago. My recommendation this evening is aligned with what we previewed then, which is to hold all of the current fees in preschool tuition at their current levels. Those fees would involve transportation fee, the athletic fee, the music lesson fee. But a key change from the current year is I do recommend the elimination of the activity fee. The reason I'm recommending this actually is very connected to some of the things we've been speaking about this evening. We talk about closing opportunity gaps. We know that there is a robust set of research that co-curricular, which we call co-curricular activities because we believe they're aligned right alongside of the importance of our academic program, also known as extracurricular activities, of course, and commonly are really important for students and what they're going to, how they're going to develop as young people. There is research that talks about this being not only beneficial to all students, but quote, "one of the few interventions that benefit low-status disadvantaged students, low socioeconomic status disadvantaged students, those less well-served by traditional education programs as much or more than their more advantaged peers." We know that it's been something that the school committee has had concerns about, of course, when instituting fees over time is how it could affect student participation. And although there's no real way to quantify this because the activity fee cuts across so many different activities across Sherwood Oak and the high school, we don't really have a great handle on when students or families have made decisions not to pursue something just because it may be something that a student may be thinking of trying out and the family doesn't want to invest $110 to see if they can try it out, or the family really is stretched financially and just as a result, the student chooses not to participate and may not come forward in a way that allows us to perhaps provide some support so that they could at a reduced rate. This removes that barrier and knowing the importance. And I think when you heard Ms. Eisenberg talking about just how critical it is for our students in our extended school care program to be back just interacting with each other and being social, there's lots of other ways our students can do that. One barrier to sort of equitable access to this we're addressing right now has been the institution or the reinstitution after about two decades of a late bus program at the middle and the high school, which we've gotten off the ground and we're hoping that's going to gain momentum. But of course, the more opportunities we have for kids who want to stay after school, who then need the late bus to transport them home, if we have another barrier, which is the fee that gets in the way, that is something that is difficult. Regarding the mental health presentation earlier, there is some recent research that says participation in co-curricular activities has been found to be associated positively with students' mental health and well-being and also correlates with the reduction in screen time on devices, which we know many families are concerned about. So for that primary reason, I'm recommending the elimination of the activity fee. You know, a secondary benefit surely is a measure of relief for families financially, especially those in grades five through 12 who have the highest fee burden because of the institution of, because of our bus program, our bus fee program. It becomes a requirement after sixth grade if you want to take the bus to pay the fee regardless of how far you live from the school. Athletic fees come into play at Oak and then at the high school. And so we feel it helps those families to a degree. Music lessons as well would start and typically they'd start at the middle school level. So given the fiscal environment we're in, high levels of inflation, higher real estate tax burden thanks to the investment our communities made in the override this last spring. It's certainly, again, not the primary reason for the recommendation, but a benefit as well that can provide some relief. And with, even with these high inflationary numbers holding the others steady, because we can afford to do that rather than making an incremental increase is the recommendation that I'm making. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions the committee has.
Great. Thank you so much. Colleagues, questions or comments? Ms. Efron?
Yeah, I know two weeks ago I struggled with this a little bit about, I have a couple of thoughts. One, certainly keeping the majority of our fees constant and not raising them despite of a lot of inflationary pressures, I think is the right move given where we are in terms of our overarching budget. I'm certainly supportive of the removal of this particular activity fee, given the number of students that it impacts. I'm now forgetting the number, but I did some of the math at our last meeting and tried to back solve the number of students that therefore would have had to pay this fee. And it's, you know, in many, many hundreds. And so I'm supportive of that. You know, as we, as a district, think moving forward, given that we are in sort of a new day budget-wise, I think it's important for us to be kind of doing two things in tandem. While I think, I think I probably speak for all of us that we would love to be in a place where we were not a fee district. That's not our reality and we have, you know, well over a million dollars built into our budget that we over time had to do to close budget gaps and that's where we were. I think as we particularly, next year, relook at our strategic plan, I think it's going to be an important conversation for us to be asking how much and at what rate are user fees appropriate for public education? And it's probably, while we were trying to, I think my question's last meeting, we're asking about whether whether we should be reducing by 5% across the board or removing one fee completely. And I think maybe the conversation is something a little different. Like what, as a district, how much do we want to be reliant upon fees and what kind of fees do we think are appropriate? And some fees, I think, exclude some kids completely from things. I remember the first time my kiddo told me that he wanted to play a music lesson. When I went on the website, I was blown away by the cost of thought. Do you really? Do you really want to do it? And so, and that's not a position I want someone to be in, to not try that out. So that's on the one hand, I really want to make sure that's a part of the conversation that we have as we relook at our strategic plan going forward. And the second thing, and I know Dr. Sawyer and I have chatted about this, is continuing to sort of impress upon our staff. I think they do this every day, but the necessity to help to discreetly aid students in saying, there are ways that we want, we want your engagement more than we want your fee dollars. And if the fee dollars are a barrier, we want to find a way to make that, to make that work for you. And so while they're necessary for us, given how much we've come to rely on those fees, we can't get rid of them in one fell swoop, but that if someone's not going to participate in an activity because of the fee, that we find ways, discreet ways, and we've talked about some more communications to parents about how to go about that, that, you know, as kids get older, that gets more and more difficult and senses of pride are important. And these are often private family matters too. So I think that's important that we just continue to reiterate and communicate to families the alternatives that are there such that kids can participate as much as is possible for those things that we're in a position to waive or offer reduced rates for, or all those other things that I know exist. But I think we have to do, constantly educate people that there is another option because otherwise you get quickly routed to power school to put your dollars in and remind people that there could be other ways. So, but with those as hopes for us for the future, I appreciate the recommendation, Dr. Sawyer, to remove this one fee. And I certainly hope that we see more kids engaged in a lot of really great programming that's going on.
Thank you. Ms. Fritz?
I think when we look back at our fees and when we started adding them as a school committee, it was difficult. No one likes it, but at that time, I remembered that discussions were fees versus cuts or elimination of teams and all of those things. And we had to weigh and balance like, what did we want to do? What did we need to do? And I agree with you. It's something we definitely need to look at, but then we've got that dependence on fees. That's big. So how do we go about that? And I wouldn't want to see programs removed. So it's a rock and hard place right now, I think. So I'm really glad that Dr. Sawyer is recommending removing activity fees. I think this is the fee that covers the widest group of students. You can play a sport and still do an activity, or play a musical instrument and still do activities. So it covers a lot of students as a whole. And it's affordable this year and I think this is a relief valve that we can give families who have supported us through the override last year. So I fully support removing the activity fee.
Ms. Pouch?
I also support the recommendation that is before us. I think it's great that we're even in a place where we can just have a conversation about lifting fees, but obviously we need to start slowly. This is, the revenue from this fee represents a comparatively small amount. It's something that we can manage within the confines of our budget. And as I had said during our discussion about this at our previous meeting, the lens through which I looked at, you know, starting to take fees back is what can we do knowing that it's going to be small as a dollar, not that it's going to benefit the most students. This may be one fee, but it is not one service covered by the fee. This fee is a barrier between students and clubs, drama and musical theater, academic teams like speech and debate, robotics, quiz team and so forth. This fee may be one fee, but it's a wide range of students, it's a wide range of programming and I will be pleased to see it go. So I support the recommendation before us.
Very briefly, I do support the recommendation. I will say that we anticipate a certain impact. And a year from now, when we're reviewing the fees, it would be very nice to know what has happened to enrollment in activities and also what has happened to dropout rates in activities. How many people started and then stopped? So we can get a better idea of just how much this matters. I think it'll matter, but I think we should know.
Great. Thank you. I do support the recommendation. I think, you know, it's a good place to start. And I think it hits a broad range of students from five to 12, grades five to 12. And I think also allows for removing some financial barriers that might be there for students to try things that maybe they didn't otherwise think about to try. So I think it's a good first start for me. So, Dr. Sawyer, any further comments?
No, I appreciate the commentary and the suggestions. No, I appreciate the commentary and the suggestions, and we'll certainly take those under advisement and work to implement those. And again, I would recommend that you move forward as the memo illustrates.
Great, thank you. Okay, this does require a vote. So, I need a motion that the committee vote to approve the adjustments to fee and tuition rates for fiscal year 2023 as illustrated in the superintendent's recommendation memo.
So, moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please do so by saying aye. Aye, and the motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes, the minutes from the school committee meeting held on March 16th. Been provided under separate cover. Colleagues, any edits or revisions? There being none, they'll be accepted as written. We do need to go into executive session tonight. So, I do need a motion that we enter into executive session for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements, Purpose 7, Open Meeting Law, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Sections 22F and G, for the purpose of reviewing, approving, and/or releasing executive session minutes. And B, for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation[1692.92]